We're good, okay. Hi, it's 6:04, we'll go ahead and call to order the October. How did that happen, first meeting of the... If you'd all take a moment to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. DiAgano, would you please call in?
Monica Johnson?
Here.
Mayday Proctor?
Here.
Amy Musgrave?
Here.
Michael Whale?
Here.
Ethan Chambers?
Here.
And Val Rusko?
Here.
Liam?
Here.
All right, we do need to approve this evening's agenda. I would entertain a motion. Are there any changes tonight? I entertain a motion on that.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
All second.
Oh, we got a motion by Director Proctor, a second by Director Johnson, to approve the agenda as presented. Any just on the motion? Harry Nunnell is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. All right, we have an agenda. Do we have any citizen comments on items? Okay. Let's move on to staff and student celebrations and recognitions.
President Wales and board members, tonight, I'm gonna keep my celebratory remarks short. When we were together two weeks ago, we spent a lot of time talking about success across the district. And in just a few minutes, you're gonna get a chance tonight to hear from each of our principals as they talk some of the things to celebrate from last year, but also what their plan is to carry forward this year and their improvement plan. And then later in the agenda, you'll be able to approve our school improvement planning. So I just wanna just call out as part of my celebration is the success that they're just having. And it's largely due to the adults we have in buildings. The adults that we have in front of students do great work, but I also strongly, strongly believe that the group we have with us tonight is a great group of leaders that had us to present to DAC last week. And it was fascinating after the DC, the compliments that we got from the other members of the community, some from other schools in our community, how strong our leaders are. So I just wanna call that out tonight, I think, tonight to just say thank you to the adults, but also thank you to those that sign up to lead the adults on a day to day basis in the building. So I'll leave my celebratory remarks right there.
Okay. Questions about any of that? Otherwise, are there any other celebrations that we wanna bring forward? All right, let's move on to reports and comments from board members. Mr. Burak, you wanna start us off?
I can go ahead, yeah. So I had the privilege to go last week to the District Accountability Committee, meeting on the road that has to go, so first time there, being able to see what the leaders in our district are, other plans are, the major improvement plans for this year and reports from last year was great to see here. Got to meet some of those leaders of the district, and it was a great opportunity. And it's all in the last two weeks.
Yeah, so I only have a couple of things I'd love to leave. I've been working a lot with the Casby Student Leadership Planning Team, so we've been in like crunch for that, getting, I'm working on opening sessions, so getting those slide shows, getting those scripts done. And then also, yesterday, I had the opportunity to run our Colorado Club Leadership Conference for FDLA. So our chapter was able to come up and speak, and it's always kinda cool to, you know, kinda pay it forward and get to connect with so many people at once.
Goodness, we, last Saturday, yeah, last Saturday, we had our first like official marching band competition. And we technically made it into the top 12, but due to some of the rules about finals, we didn't make it to the finals. But it was really a great experience for our growing band. I have a committee to speak to the captain of this morning about the celebration of the growing community program, which is very exciting. I was also asked to help out with the new club that is starting, M.I.S., and I'm very excited about that. Really intrigued to see how we're growing our music program at the elementary level. I'm really excited for that.
Awesome.
We're getting better at the mics. I, like Liam, got a chance to go to District Accountability Committee meeting last Wednesday. And just so impressed with our principals that are represented here today. Our schools have such great leaders that are, that they see an entire vision. They see a vision, they're working in accordance with each other, they're making wonderful changes happen. We can see that reflected in the data that we get to review. And there is just such a positive influx of growth that's coming from our district that I'm so proud, I'm so proud to be able to tell people that this district is a district that they can feel confident that their kids will go to, that they have strong leadership and a chance real valuable in for me. We're valuable education, and that comes largely from leadership of people that are present in this room tonight. So I wanna thank them for that. That's all I have.
All right, I haven't done much. I've gone to a few football games, a few volleyball games, and that's pretty much it been life and... So I don't really have much.
Yes, please.
You all, well, same to you. Well, no, of course, I've been softball, football, homecoming grades. Jessica and I randomly saw each other while taking photos of our beautiful children. So that was, that was neat, kids had a good time. That was well done. I did have just, I'll take a moment to just speak of a place of shared humanity. And I'm sorry, I wrote this 15 minutes before I got here, because I've had a crazy day. We've had ongoing on politically, and that's reflected on a lot of activity and discussion with the students. I know this is late, but this was our first meeting after Charlie Kirk assassination. Of course, Melissa and Mark Horton, Brian Thompson, who politically assassinated him. And I, the reason I'm bringing this up is it was shared with me, my parents, my students, that there were celebrations, the news of Charlie Kirk stuff, and also people just saying, you know, he deserved what it, things like that. I wanna be clear that no matter how strongly we disagree with someone, with their views, their actions, anything that they kill or brought to us, celebrating their death does not reflect the values that we strive to uphold in our school key. And we, as a local governing board, carry an immense responsibility, not just to make decisions to help our students, our staff and families, but to model the kind of civic behavior we hope to instill in the next generation. I think that we've lost the art of the code policy debate in our culture. It used to be we could agree on a problem, see it, and then just discuss and debate a solution. Now, we struggle just agreeing that there's a problem. As our boards, we as a board and as a community are a diverse group with different life experiences, ideas effective. That diversity should be our strength. We as board, as our most local board for our students, we need to show our students that it's possible to debate and disagree passionately and still treat each other with dignity. We can stand unite our commitment to have respectful dialogue, shared purpose, and civil discourse. We need to be leading by example. We need to learn and reflect on how we can engage in critical thought and dialogue without losing our commitment to respect and dignity. I think we've lost the ability to see each of those people. We lean towards hate and violence. And even, I mean, some of my closest friends have completely different points than I do, and I love them with my whole heart. And we can have respectful dialogue and then go about our day and still love each other. And I think that as a community and as a board, we need to really focus on being to talk to each other. We've lost the ability, if there's the ability to debate, we lose democracy itself. I also want to just address the student we invited to be a part of our board. I want us to set a good example for you. When you ask questions or share your opinions, we need to listen and respect your viewpoints. And I really appreciate you being here. You should be able to share your viewpoints with any opponent or anything else. And also to the children that we serve in our community, I just wanna tell you, we value you, we love you, and we respect you. I'll just end with this quote. "You will never be the best version of yourself if you let people convince you that you can't be better because of your skin color, because of your sexual identity, because of the community you came from. You must resist those narratives at all costs if you try to be successful in America." I just wanna know you and all the other students, you can do whatever you want to do, achieve what you want to achieve, and we're here to do. That quote was from Charlie Kirk, and I didn't just, I didn't agree with everything that he said, but he said a lot of the things I did agree with. And just like one else that participates in political dialogue, we should respect each other. And no one, not Melissa Horton, not Brian Thompson, is horrible as we think insurance companies are. Charlie Kirk deserves death, just because we disagree with them. And I want us as a board to participate in our dialogue and obviously have disagreements and still respect each other. And we can reflect back to you and the rest of the students. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. It's been on my mind and scribbled that out, and I hope I have really good that one though. Thank you, guys, for being here on a board, and we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay.
Michael?
Thank you. I guess I was, when you guys were off, and I was jugging, because I've been busy the last couple of weeks. We had our BOSI's meeting last week. That went really well. It was amazing how many of the schools in Wild County were having their homecoming on the same weekend, because everybody's like, homecoming, homecoming, homecoming. It's always fun, though, this time of year, too, because we start kinda talking about student numbers, the diversity of Centennial BOSI's. Of all the schools represented there, and this includes St. Brandon District 6, our growth was probably bigger than anybody else. But I had to laugh, because some of the smaller districts in the group, you know, one said, well, their senior class is down 50%, because last year they graduated eight, and this year they're only gonna graduate nine, which is, I mean, yeah, when you really think about a school of that size, it's put so much more to perspective. There was another one, though, that 65 kids in the entire district. And they're, yeah, and then concerned because they only have two preschoolers signed up so far, so. But it's, it was a good meeting. Of course, BOSI's, a lot of the money that comes to BOSI's is all federal funded, outside of the dues that we pay as districts. And so, because they facilitate a lot of those federal programs. But everything is, everything's worked out, because a lot of that stuff got put back in the places it's supposed to be, and that money's coming through, and so we're, they're all breathing a pretty heavy sigh of relief on that end. On a downside, I, we had a Casby President's meeting last week, too. And Mary Part, who is the President, Jeffco, is part of my small group. And I'll know, you know, just Jeffco had a school shooting two weeks ago. And it was, I was glad to be there. I mean, I, I didn't put it together right away, and I saw Mary come into the meeting, and we were doing some small talk, and then it, then it dawned on me, it's like, oh, my gosh, this is, this is going on in her life. And I was glad to be there for her, because the one thing she communicated was that she felt kind of like on an island, and the school board kinda felt like they were on an island. With everything that's going on, and they didn't know, they didn't know how to respond, and they didn't know how, how they should respond. And so it was, it was good to be able to just let her talk through that. Hopefully, she never has to repay that favor to me or any school board member. But yeah, I was, I was glad I could be a part of that. Mr. Burak forgot to mention that he and I chaired the Workforce Development Youth Committee. Last week, we had a Boys and Girls Club at their new clubhouse in Malickin. This was our topic on AI, and it was, it was a barn burner. We, I mean, there was a lot of, lot of excitement around it. How, what role AI is gonna play in the workforce? And it was interesting, because one of the things we wanted to try to do, there's a lot of negative connotation about it right now. And we wanted to kinda get one that and go to the other side and say, what, what are employers looking for from students or yelts entering the workforce? What type of experience would AI, would they like them to have? And the question we answered kept coming back, really, was that nobody really knew. But we had Ryan, I can't think of Ryan's last name, but he's, he's the...
Ross.
Ross, it is Ross. He's the Chief Technology Officer for Wild County. He came and gave a presentation. And it was so funny, because he was super transparent. When he started, he said, "This whole presentation, including all the creative, is, was generated by AI." And so he talked about how the county is utilizing AI in 26, all 26 divisions that the county operates in. And so he talked about some of the things that they would like to see in entry-level employees for what they know. But Jeremy Arrow from our school district went and talked about AI in the classroom and some other districts are doing what we're starting to see in our district. And it, yeah, it was just a really engaged conversation. And usually, they're not engaging, but we had folks from Ames, we had folks from UNC. District 6 was there, and just, just a really good conversation around what, what the future will hold for, at least in the course. So that was good, and that was exciting, and we did a great job. Kate was even there. And we had the biggest piece of pizza I've ever seen in life. Right? Did you see, did you have any of that, Kate? Did you have any of the pizza?
I did not.
Did you see pizza?
I saw a lot of, there wasn't much left. Was it good?
Oh, yeah, it's from, it's Empire State, I think.
Pizza Empire.
Empire. 21-inch, it's a 21-inch pizza. Like, the pieces are like, they're crazy, it's crazy. I digress. Monday evening, Superintendent Nielsen and Mr. Benson and myself represented the school district along with Officer Tuck. He played two spots. We met with the Clearview HOA about damage to the fence. You know, ran through a couple of different ideas, kinda kicked it back to the HOA. They're gonna talk to their legal team about some of the stuff that we came up with. I would say, all in all, a pretty productive meeting. Not, not hostile, or I think just genuinely figure out how, how does this all, how are we gonna make this work without creating a lot of extra money for damages?
I just read that email, and I was coaching softball, so I couldn't go. I, I did really, and I talked to Nate about it previously, the idea of having that gap. So I'm, I'm hopefully, I'm gonna follow up with Gemma and see.
And I think, well, and that's, Scott and I were kinda pushing that, but Officer Tosi came up with a better idea, and that was to just offset the panels from each other.
Yeah, that's actually what my kid said.
So that way, there's, there is a path through without having to make one. Before I forget, thank you for the video sent out to the staff regarding the performance frameworks. Again, I think that's super important that we, that we celebrate that and not, not let any sense of complacency come into that. That, yeah, this was, like we said, it's a marathon, and hey, man, we're at mile 20, here's some cool water, keep on, keep on truckin'. And I was super excited to see that our LinkedIn account has been revived. Thank you. Okay. Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's all, because it was one of her posts that came up, and she was like reposting, and I was like, what? The district's? So, super excited about that. Yesterday, I was at the Workforce Symposium, Northern Carolina Workforce Symposium. Not a whole lot of exciting stuff there, other than I, one of our, one of our Workforce Board members is Ashley Flynn, is the Program Director for Forward Steps, which is working at Roosevelt High School with connecting kids with post-secondary opportunity. And it was just, we, we had a little time to sit and shit chat. Again, this is another one of those outside agencies who's working in our district and just in awe of the opportunities that we're providing. And, and it just validates everything that we've been talking about with grow student achievement, and then, of course, all the, all the opportunities that we offer young folks. So I walked out of there with, on a little cloud of goodness, because it was, it was, it was cool, again, to hear somebody say good things about the, and genuinely be excited about what's happening here. That wraps it up for me. Anything else that, anybody?
I have a, in my locker. Okay. So I followed the need today to make a statement to the board and to those who are listening in. I wanted to clear up some things from our last board meeting. I feel like some topics regarding the superintendent's advisory were not expressed how we had hoped. So I wanted to highlight some of the missed points from that meeting. There was this amazing opportunity brought to us by Superintendent Nielsen and the Board of Education. We as a group have been able to address some concerns with the RHS Counseling Department, which has brought some great changes in how we handle student scheduling and four-year plans. These changes made the beginning of the year smoother for our administrators and counselors due to the decrease in scheduled requests, because every returning student was met with at the end of the previous semester to discuss their schedule. They're building a connection between student and counselor. Another notable element was the collaboration of the student board members with SEDEXO. There was some unease in the rehiring of SEDEXO, but through the communication between SEDEXO and our student board members, mainly Liam Burak, been able to make a significant change in the cafeteria, and I've heard great feedback from students and staff. None of this, of course, would be possible with support and humility of the Board of Education and Superintendent Nielsen. I'd like to give a special thank you to President Wales, as is for my amending, that he was the one who brought forth the push for the student voice. Please, thank you for that. With this amazing opportunity, however, for not only the students, but also for the addition of emphasis on boundaries. I have some concerns of, I have some concerns about the emphasis on, or sorry, I have some concerns about the interjection of parents' thoughts and beliefs into the spaces for students to share their opinions. The parents have always had a voice. They're ones that, they're, they're the ones that protect us, they're the ones that go to the parent-teacher conferences. There are PTAs for, there are social media spaces for this. And to diminish only their own children's voices, but the voices of other students for their own personal agendas should not, should not be the purpose of this opportunity. I encourage all students to use their voice and speak from their heart, not anyone else's, so that moving forward, we can continue to listen to all voices without smiling to others. I'm so very grateful for this opportunity. I'm sure these other two can agree. I'm sure the superintendent's advisory group is also very grateful, and we would hate to see this opportunity taken away from us because of personal agendas of other people. Again, thank you, Board of Education and our superintendent, for giving us this opportunity. I wanted to make this point last meeting, but nevermind this, too, but I wanna thank Superintendent Nielsen and Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Kramer for you guys giving your time, once a month, or whatever it is, to listen to our voices and to bring yourself down to high school level to listen to our concerns for the high school. And you having the humility to really try to understand them. And even Mr. Benson, thank you for spending your time there and really respecting our concerns and taking action with them, and we've seen room with them, and we're, thank you.
Well, thanks, guys. I, I wouldn't be in fear of, I can't speak for the superintendent's advisors committee, but I think for your seats with the student board, I mean, you guys are doing exactly what we hoped you would do, and, you know, bring, bring student concern and bring student voice into this room. So we appreciate you. So thank you. All right, well, let's move on to the report from the superintendent's office.
All right, President Wales and board members, student board members, it is my pleasure tonight to ask our principals to share with you their plan. I'm gonna turn my time over to our principals. I would ask tonight that we allow our principals to go through one at a time, and we hold questions that we have until the end. And I ask that partly because there's a lot of continuity that's been built between this group of leaders. And I think you start to see that, and I think you've even commented on that as we have been in two buildings talking about belonging. But as you think about the school improvement plan process that we'll ask you to approve later, that plan isn't actually due for our principals until October 5th. What you'll see tonight, though, is their plans, as they've crafted them in a one-page or so they can walk through with you. You'll get a sense of what the goals are, what they're targeting. And I think what you'll see is a lot of continuity. And I think part of the reason you see continuity is because we have focused on academic growth. I can only speak for the two-plus years that I've been here, but we focused on how do we improve accessibility to high-level expectations for all students. And I think what we're seeing in our outcomes is an improvement in outcomes for students, and that's exciting. And also, as you, about President Wales, it's a marathon, and we're, I don't know that I'd say we're at mile 20 yet. We're maybe a little earlier in the marathon than that. We're on a path going after high achievement for all, and I think in this room, our board has set some targets for us. Our principals have high-level, high targets for themselves, too. So it is my pleasure tonight to ask, I think we're starting, my guess is the way it started all year long, Tucker's probably our first out of the chute. So comfortable, Tucker, if I turn it over to you to get going?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
So our school, you'll see on there, the first thing is our uniform improvement plan. We're at a 61.6 this year, which is the growth of the last year. So we're moving in the right direction. Our improvement strategies are the same things I would have talked about when you guys came over to our building, our hard complaints, and that's kind of what I'm kind of focusing on. So ensuring quality instruction, creating culture of learning, increasing student engagement and creating student ownership. We did the first strategy of quality instruction by working our co-teaching, which is a model in our building that works really well. We have one open space in more of our regular areas, so we do a lot of co-teaching and what that would look like, because you can say co-teaching, but you really have to practice that, it's a different kind of model. We have a literacy focus. We worked on a lot of collaboration with that and training in small groups. So that was something that we worked on. A lot of grade-level decision standards and teaming. So we, most of our teams completed cycles in literacy and math and then targeted small group instruction. For culture of learning, just creating those positive relationships. Improving our transition was a thing we worked on. So sometimes kids would spend, I calculated one time that there was a group of kids that spent nearly 20 to 30 minutes a day standing in a line. So we don't need to do that in our environment. We can move really quickly from space to another. It's a little different than being in a classroom where you're going down the hallway. And then we got each teacher lead one of our community circles per week last year. And also for increasing student engagement, we worked on just professional development and different engagement techniques and how you can apply those into our classroom, our space. For creating student ownership, we have, we have that on our rubrics that we worked on and we also used our mental health team to just kind of add some help, some layers to that. So then working with our counselor more, our school staff more, and then our partnership of work. On the backside, you can see kind of what we're working on this year. You'll see the same things we were able to, both with the tutor option, our uniform improvement plan, so we have the same goals, but we're just focusing on a little bit of different things we're adding to what we focused on before, because we are seeing growth with that, so we'll continue it. But there's something that I think we can improve and get better on. So we have a, more of a school-wide focus on literacy. I've noticed that we have some areas where our kids weren't writing, especially when we look at state testing. They have to have a zero, place of a constructive response. So getting the kids to write more and that is just the natural thing to do, so they don't just skip out on a test, I think will help us a lot. Also in our math area, we noticed that there was, if it was a problem that involved explaining it, we'd score lower. So just getting our thoughts on paper and then knowing too that we've done a lot with our race responses, but not every question needs a race response, some are not. For improving our culture of learning, creating those positive relations, our strong classroom Teachers now, we're observing more of those seamless transition. We're establishing a safe, inclusive, respected learning environment. And teachers are, we, all teachers will be participating in teaming and data discussions. We kind of got a right from our data discussions last year. We thought teaming would kind of supplement that, but they're different, it's a different kind of conversation, so we want to make sure we don't have those here. For student engagement, we're going to just keep engaging in prior knowledge. We'll do check screening, make sure we're using techniques to show for kids to be engaged. We even have a rubric that checks out how much they're engaged. And then student ownership, I'm trying to get, kind of taking the model, getting student voices, having student voice and meaning in speech, so it's a, I guess a principal criteria, but not as of just kids who are like student council. I also want those kids who were like me as a kid, who maybe got in trouble once in a while and had to talk to the principal.
Had trouble or got in trouble.
Had trouble. If the good thing is, is when you're, with a kid like that, you can stay a step ahead of the kids that come to your office. So that's always an help. But a lot of times I feel like those are the kids that are like, you know, if you did this different, I probably wouldn't be in your office all the time. And sometimes they'll tell you straight up without worrying about your feelings or anything else. And I feel like you can get a lot of knowledge on that. Also involving our kids in productive struggle. So especially if some of those higher students, they're used to everything coming actually and easily. So when they have to get in that burning pit, we call it, it's really hard for them. So teaching them that's okay, that's what we're learning, teach best. And then building on respectfully, question equals response. So we say, so you, how do you respond to that? By being respectful. So that's the stuff we're going on and we're hoping to continue to grow our, the same way that we've done so. Is the question there at the end?
No questions there. Thanks Tucker. Next we want to all up, I'm going to say our MES dual, but we'll start with Jen. As Jen's coming up though, I do want to call out, and we talked about this before, but I'd love to see it on camera, that Milliken last year scored the highest we can find since we've been keeping score with state testing. So I just want to call that out. That's a huge celebration for the leaders who now run two buildings, but last year ran one. We'll see some commonalities as they celebrate last year. And with that, Jen, go ahead, take it away.
Superintendent Nielsen, President Wales and esteemed members of the board, we're excited to share that our staff and students worked so hard to increase our school performance from last year. We were really excited to move from a period of improvement to performance and to stay at performance and have a higher level this year. That's all based on the work in classroom, their teachers and students every day. You'll see, to start with, we had three major improvement strategies last year. Our first one aligned quality standards-based best-first instruction across content area with the goals of having four teaming cycles in every grade level, mathematics and literacy, to evaluate students' learning. We did complete three to four of those cycles in each grade with a total of 21 cycles schoolwide. Part of that was intentional with the transition. Our teachers and staff needed to be able to focus on completing their instruction for that year and prepare for the move. And so we intentionally allowed for flexibility for staff. On those cycles, 82.5% of students proficient or advanced work or grew one instructional level on the standards identified with protocols. In addition, you'll also notice one item has a strike through. We intentionally set aside developing that school-wide scope and sequence for science and social studies because of the transition and because of the things on the teachers' plates that year. As you'll see, that's coming back on and we will be focusing on that here. Also for our vertical articulation in math and literacy standards, we focused on place value and expository writing, which in our C-mat were areas for improvement the year before. On our second major improvement strategy, we, we talked through that collaborative and data-driven discussion. And in that, we did complete, we altered our model for meetups and we moved it less from a formal stand-in front where teachers are teaming two families. We made it more of an authentic family night where they were talking with families. And so we changed the model for last year. We did see a dip in our attendance. And so that is something that when we bring meetups back in, that we will consider in the model. For major improvement strategy number three and supporting students, we went to highlight that through the STOC program, we had 26 fathers or father figures support in building, which represented approximately 200 hours of volunteerism. We're super proud of the growth the program has continued to see and I'm excited to see what it'll look like between the two buildings this year. We also continued in our code care implementation with community circles in every classroom and we began implementation of restorative stations in our classrooms where we have leaders start as the, as our implementation team and they went to do their training. We'll see some of the year over into the major improvement strategy for this year as well. But instead of having three separate cap, separate strategies, we are combining into Hoping for the focus to be able to accomplish all of the tasks underneath them. So our first one is a common mission and vision strengthened through community partnerships. We will intentionally engage staff, students and families along with community partners to co-create a mission and vision as a primary school that's committed to rigorous student outcomes and aligned to our core values. We'll also define how each of those four work together to support the mission and vision and align the day-to-day work of our partners with the mission and vision. Through that and the review of practices and partnerships, we'll intentionally discontinue new practices that are effective and in alignment. Our second major strategy is around the data-driven collaborative culture to consistently implement and review effectiveness of rigor standard-based instruction. We will complete four teaming cycles across grade levels in mathematics and literacy and review the impact of instructional moves. We'll also implement our school-wide spoken sequence for literacy and mathematics and develop a wide-spoken sequence for science, social studies, as well as our specialized areas. Thank you.
President Wales, board members, Superintendent Nielsen, I'm really excited to piggyback the word Dr. Kell was just talking about. If you look on the first page there, you're going to see the same exact things he just presented. So I'm not going to, I'm going to say to you to not go with those same exact things. I just want to build upon what we worked on last year and what is going to happen at Milliken intermediate school and what our goals are. So we realized that we had a lot of success and we realized through that success, there were some common themes that we want to continue. So if we scroll to the second page, see two of those strategies. We're rewording it, we're revamping it, we're adding some things, and we're at third strategy as well. So for strategy one, we're going to focus online rigorous standard-based lessons that reflect the best-first instruction in every content area, ensuring students have equitable access to meaningful experiences. After digging into the data a little bit further, we realized that non-viction text is an area of weakness for us and we want to really expose kids' opportunities for that, as well as, yes, we have grown in our writing, our writing across content. And as Tucker was saying, what their focus at OWL is making sure kids are doing that so often. So building their stamina, stamina, so when they get into testing, it's not just, oh, I've already written on one question, three questions ago, I'm going to continue to pursue those written responses. Some of the others there, we're going to complete at least four cycles. We've already, in two grade levels, I'm happy to say, we've already almost completed one cycle already. So they're bought into that work. And I shared this story, Karen, Karen Wiser, you know, when you think about teaming and the scaling and the aspects of it all, one of our teams that we had at MES a couple of years ago was one of the model teams, one of the first teams. And that team has now, there's only one out of the four members left. And that team is bought in and really it's been pretty seamless to see. And they've taken on even more of the leadership behind it. So I know it's going to be sustained. We are going to continue in vertical articulation discussions around math and literacy. And I know there is a need and a want for not putting in our plan, also in science. And then one of the moves that we're making and changing this year is to go with a co-teaching model across all 12 of our home rooms. So what we realize when we look at the data and how we're going to continue to grow is two of our suburbs, we can impact a little bit deeper. Instead of doing pull-out groups as often as we have been, we are actually going to push in another certified teacher to meet those needs and having cohort groups within there in that structure, instruction. We are partnering with Ms Calviel, kind of with the UNC professor that she's partnered with and he's working with us as well. So we're really excited about that, to be able to really provide opportunities for our students every single day, specifically in literacy and the co-teaching model. For strategy number two, students will be offered a variety of supports to ensure success academically, socially. This goes, most of these here are things we've already been doing, but we're going to do them a little bit differently in some instances because it is a 3-5 building. So we're continuing with culture of care. We're just going to continue to spread out how we do it and more people trained to do more historic work. Our ninth success lab is going to continue for-school intervention and enrichment opportunities. And honestly, it's been really exciting to hear what some of those new opportunities we have with the facilities we have as a former middle school. We're going to continue our positive behavior systems and you'll hear a little bit further and it's actually on the next point about, within those PBIS moments, we're going to focus on student leadership. When we think about belonging and being in school, making sure students who belong by or through leadership, feeling like, yes, I have ownership in this school and I have opportunities to lead, not only in the classroom, but our building. We're going to continue our watchdog program and it's really exciting that we are able to do that between two buildings because our assistant principal's leading that work. And then two new things that we're doing this year that I'm excited about and our staff is excited about is semester unit award nights, not just academic awards, but teachers being able to call out student growth and kind of come up with their own creative ways to acknowledge students and bringing families in to celebrate. And then also student showcase. We used to do this type thing back in the day, I can say that, because I taught at MES for a long time, where we would bring in student, our families to show off our student work. I don't know where it got lost, it was COVID probably, but we want to do a student showcase and our, our grade levels are excited about that. We've already started the beginning work to be able to do wax museum, a science fair, every grade level and partnering with KSL to bring in, like I said, the community to be able to show off student work. This is major in strategy, or improvement strategy number three, foster student leadership and engagement. I'm pretty passionate about leadership and students leading and we've already are working on that. Our students will is kind of a driver initially, but there's going to be opportunities that are being defined by our leadership team that students can lead and work around the building. We treat them as many middle, even middle schoolers, they're going to be more likely, we believe, to be prepared to go off to Roosevelt Middle School. And then the last two there, expand student voice, not only through our student council, other opportunities where students have a voice on what next steps look like. And then also through these leadership roles, we believe students can socially and emotionally have the skills to prepare themselves, not only this school year and the years ahead. Thank you.
Thanks Alan. And as Alan steps down and we bring Jess up, I want to thank all three of them. I think one of the things we went through as a district this year is a pretty good-sized boundary change, moving students from Jess's building back over to our kid. But then we also split a building and that's not simple, easy work. And the three of them, I think, have done it seamlessly. So I just want to thank all three of you for the connections you have and the work you did to set that up and the attention you have with you this year is pretty fascinating and awesome to watch.
Thank you, Superintendent Nielsen, President Wales, member of the members of the board for having us tonight. I'm excited to share our performance plan rating, but also what we worked on last year and where we're toward this year. Our, as with Mr Willard, we are on the biennial option for school improvement plan, so we are keeping the same major improvement strategies and continuing with the work inside of each of those. Last year, in major improvement strategy number one, which was social learning, we worked on daily community circles in our classroom, had school-wide trauma-informed training for our teachers through a partnership with North Rainy Behavioral Health. And our PPG data from last year reflected the growth. We have reviewed that with you, so I won't go through all of those specifics again. It's here for you to read if you'd like. Major improvement strategy number two is family and community engagement. For us, that's been a foot on having opportunities outside of school hours and inside of school hours for families to come and engage with students' learning directly in the classroom and during the day. Third major improvement strategy is around instructional collaboration. So we, as part of our district initiative around teaming, engaged in 19 teaming cycles last year. The most exciting teaming collaboration was the teaming collaboration between MES and The most exciting teaming collaboration was the teaming collaboration between MES and Pioneer Ridge's special education teams, because each team was small enough that they felt like coming together to do that work would be more effective. And so we have managed to make that work across the two schools and that's been exciting to engage with that team. We continue to review data points with staff at the sharp time periods to look at how our students are doing and then review progress monitoring data as well and continuing to have our meeting intervention and strategic instruction time aligned to student needs and to read and goals where it's helpful. This year, our staff is engaging in the train, the trainer model. So we have a team that went to a train and they are going to engage with the rest of our staff in implementing restorative practice in the classroom. So we've used restorative practices in the office when we engage with behavior situations. And we're now going to roll that down to classrooms and make ourselves available to come classroom so that if a teacher needs to do some restorative work with students, they're able to do that directly. Year two in culture of care for our school. Major improvement strategy number two, continuing to, for opportunities for families to engage with student learning during the day and family activities in the evening. And also year two of watchout, the watchouts program. Last year, we had over a hundred volunteer hours, had our kickoff earlier in September and have had returning and new volunteers in our building supporting everything from crosswalks, mentoring dance, lunch duties, playing with kids at recess, and really increasing that opportunity in our school for that strong presence outside of staff members. Major improvement strategy number three, continuing with our instructional collaboration. We began our year by looking at last year's CMAS and the WBA data to determine which standards we wanted to address first this year, based on how our students did last year and the students who are coming to us in each grade level. We have had five or six grade level teams complete their clarity protocol. Most have done their evidence and analysis, evidence, analysis and action protocol and are moving into impact to see how our planning for that instruction is impacting our student achievement. We're going to continue to review data points after major testing windows with staff to determine not only the standards we look at for teaming, but how our students are responding and what adjustments we make.
Thanks, Jess. All right, next we're going to have Ms. Calviel join us. And I do want to remind you, she's going to talk about the success we had at the middle school last year. I think it's interesting to think back to last year and to realize that we spent last year in two separate, and so Ms. Calviel, as part of celebration and doing great work, also had students transition from one building to another, which again, we talked about splitting the buildings, but what they carried, a pretty huge task in the mid-year was, was done well and we didn't lose focus on academics, which is super powerful.
Thank you, Superintendent Nielsen, President Wales, members of the board. I'm happy to report that Roosevelt Middle School is a performance yet again this school year, even with the mid-year mill. We managed to move in the middle of a school year and lose focus on academics. Our staff and students did. Last year, we had two major improvement strategies. Our first improvement strategy was around data-driven instruction aligned to standards. So what this looked like in our building is our teachers were collecting data on students around literacy, writing in all classrooms and then in the math classroom, writing and processing. That work and those efforts showed funnel growth. We achieved fifty-eight on the median growth percentile. So if your, your goal is fifty, we rocked it with fifty-eight in language arts. The data did show that we needed to continue focus on the area of math. Our second improvement strategy was around the implementation of our school-wide initiatives. We call those our must-emptments. We had six initiatives last year. Part of the initiatives also included the rollout through our professional learning communities. That was the foundational work for where we're heading this year. So this year, we have two major improvement strategies. The first one is around a shift in mindset. The shift in mindset, we are a new school, it gives us the opportunity, quite honestly, to create a new vision and define who we are. We have more career and technical ed pathways than we've ever had, but our vision doesn't really capture that. And so we'll be working on that. We'll also use this as an opportunity to create our vision for our new school, but also to align with the profile of the graduate. We already do a lot of that great work, but it allows us to be intentional with that alignment. We're also going to do some professional development around collective efficacy in our beliefs. What do we, the students in our building can do and what are they capable of? We are currently in the process of creating staff and student expectations. We're actually going to call them staff and student principals. What is it that we believe our students should do as Roosevelt Middle School Mustangs? And when we're looking at our staff, what standard do we hold ourselves to when we're hiring, what are we looking for in future Mustangs? What do we want on our team? And then as an effort to support kids, when we look at our data from last school year, we can see that we're missing the mark with some of our sub-populations. So we are continuing to roll out MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support meetings, to discuss students and really focusing on what kids need and meeting where they're at versus the one-size-fits-all approach. Our second improvement strategy is on increased focus on intentional instructional strategies. So that kind of aligns with MTSS, meeting students where they're at approach that I've already mentioned. Our teachers are currently co-planning with each other, aligning to standards and making intentional moves to support students. So they're looking at data and in real time, every week, twice a week, to figure out where to make those moves to better support kids. We as administrators are in classroom every day to focus on coaching teachers to refine their practices. And then we're continuing to focus on literacy and also integrating math more. Literacy this year, we're going to really focus on providing feedback. Our kids are phenomenal writers, but we want to help them reflect and grow their own practice. And then we're asking all teachers across the building to think about how they can integrate math. That's where we're heading this year.
Hey, thanks, Aspen. Next, we'll call out Mr. Benson and he's coming up. I just want to call out, I was in a meeting a week ago. And one of the things that we know well, we talk a lot about is all the pathways that are present at our high school. But what was called out last week in the meeting I was in was the continuity of work-based learning opportunities between our middle school and our high school. You don't find that very many places. And so I just want to thank both of you for the work that you've done to align the practices, but also give students work-based learning opportunities at the middle school that carry forward high school.
Thank you, Superintendent Nielsen, President Wales and members of the board for allowing me to speak tonight. Roosevelt High School is at a performance plan this year as well, the scale score of fifty-three. We'll acknowledge that it's a drop from last year's score of sixty-two, which in large part was due to a performance in PSAT and SAT within our math department and a slight decrease in performance in the English department or an English scale score, not necessarily the department. Despite an increase in our score for post-secondary readiness, which speaks to our industry specifics, as well as our increase in amount of students who are attending a two-year or four-year college. And then of course, one of our solutions also is we have eleven percent lead scale score increase with our students with IEPs in reading. So yeah, there's a lot of conflicting data to get out of that score, but we're certainly looking forward to kind of unpacking those and kind of looking at the, going through our clarity process. Just briefly here on the P425 goals, we did work through our third year of MTSS, primarily looking at second and tier two and tier three, which is your twenty percent of your students who might be struggling. Some of the highlights from that is over a three-year period, we have had a ten percent beat to chronic absenteeism. We've gone from thirty-six percent just out of COVID to twenty-six percent of chronic absenteeism. To give you an idea, the state average is somewhat below thirties. So we are below that and we're continuing to trend down as far as students attending and not beating that chronic absenteeism. And also our graduation rate has gone from two-point-three percent down to one-point-one percent. So a lot of those things are directly related to our MTSS process, providing supports for students who are struggling to kind of get them to the finish line, which is graduation and diploma, and setting them up for post-secondary work. Our second improvement strategy, kind of inferred before, was just that increase in math and English-based reading and writing. We did hit the mark on the math scores, but as I mentioned before, did slightly in the PSATs. We did notice a consistent downward trend with our current seniors the last three years in the PSAT and SAT in regards to math. So certainly looking forward to putting in some measures this year in regards to setting robust goals, which I'll talk about in a minute, looking at standards, committing to reteaching when there's a lack of understanding, as well as doing some full practice tests. The added teaching to the test was not something that was very favorable, but certainly it's important to simulate as many standardized test assessments during the school year for the kids so that they are better prepared for the testing session. And then the third improvement strategy, which continues, which is our programs and initiatives. As Scott mentioned, we talked about articulation in school, but over a three-year period, we've gone from five CT pathways to eighteen. We've increased the amount of students and sections of advanced placement and we significantly increased the amount of students in UNC courses. And to highlight that, we've got a five percent increase over four years in college credits earned. So with our students going from about low three hundreds to over two thousand this past year. Of course, as you also mentioned, our work-based learning. We've had three students three years ago and now we have sixty-four students in the work-based learning program. Some of our goals for this year, looking at failure rate as well as ensuring success starts as freshmen. So the C-100 strategy is looking at hiring, well, we did hire a counselor for our freshmen. This year, we have a counselor specifically for the freshmen and they will stay in that role, just building that continuity, building that, that point of emphasis and point of contact for all of our freshmen. Mentioned before, I think some of those potential structures with setting up four-year plans of study with the freshman counselor, looking at, you know, different some, you know, classes like math lab and study hall and having some of that partnership that the counselor is serving in the MTSS process will really hopefully set our freshmen up for success for ninth and eleventh grade. The second one again, I touched on, which is just having our teachers really own the data and really helping them to guide instruction. So we'll continue with department work around self-alignment. We've done a lot of work with that the last couple of years, which basically means that regardless of who your child has for English or any of the science, math, whatever, as far as the core, there's some of this are almost exactly the same. So getting the same experiments. Guidance and training around professional development and then those anchor assessments for the standardized tests as MT4. And then the third one, which is again, having a twenty percent increase in growth. Achievement is absolutely wonderful, but we like to really hang our hat on growth. We get the kids we get and to know that from year, what they want until the end of the year, those students have grown is really important. So setting a robust academic growth score of twenty percent increase over last year is certainly a piece. And then one that I don't think is on there, which is just an increase with some of our students with disabilities and continuing that progress with what made with English and transferring that over to math. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Benson, and thank you all readers for sharing. I open it up at this point. Board members, what questions do you have for?
How do we want to do this?
Do you want to do like overall from each school?
So that's kind of how I framed mine. I have each school, then I have elementary, middle high together, and then I have kind of an overarching.
Yeah.
Let me first say, thank you so much for coming tonight. I know we didn't do this last year and I, I think that was a real disservice of the board to you. When I, when I went through these this year, I, I started, I had eight pages of questions. And today, like kind of narrowing them down and trying to like get them pulled together. And as you guys are talking, I'm scratching stuff off because you're answering. You're putting, you're putting a narrative behind the bullet point. I think it's really important for us to hear that and I apologize I didn't give you that opportunity last year. So I appreciate it. I know it's a long day to be at school, especially on a Wednesday, midweek day, and your heavy day just even gets longer, but we appreciate it. So with that said, do, do maybe we just want to go down the line? There's questions for each school that each, then we can ask them out. So let's, let's just go back up with Elwell. Any questions for Tucker specific? And I told him before that I didn't have questions, but now I have questions.
You have one page that you can dedicate, Mr. Willard.
I'll start. All right, Tucker, here's my questions. You're very consistent in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, each improvement strategy has, I guess I'm, I just lied, I was going to say four bullet points, the last one has six. Is this achievable? I'm worried that you pick four with multiple certs and that fills like lots to hit with all of those intentionally along with other items.
I think what our focus of being like our cardinal planes, these are things that like is our system. So those are things that we're working on all the time. So we put it in our unified approval plan just to, we're talking about these things all the time. And a lot of these things kind of, if you start looking into them, there are some that might be in the cultural learning, but they're also in student ownership. So they can add a little as well. So yes, they are.
Do I have to turn you?
Yes.
Mine are really just trying to garner better understanding. I've expressed it before, but I sometimes just don't own down all of the words that educators use. So I would love just to, to define what it means exactly for my understanding. And so for strategy, or excuse me, strategy number two on create a culture of learning, will you just explain the facilitating of seamless transitions? What exactly does that mean?
Just, just between our groups. So we do one group to the next. Like it's a pretty, this is one of those things that won't take up a whole lot of time. But like I said, like sometimes our teachers were lining kids up. You went to like wash hands and we had a line. It was like, we can move from one thing to the next. Just if the kids wash their hands, we have seats in the middle of the room now, just wash their hands. You know, many people are on the bathroom and line up.
Just really moving kids from point A to point B?
Yeah, moving up from one thing, we said like, hey, let's all line up and always move to this thing. Like, let's just go. My concerns, I'm like, we just wasted five minutes. All we did was get kids in a line. And even like walking down the hallway, our fifth graders, we walked them out without even the line. And if they, there's a couple that'll get out of hand and then we'll address those couples instead of everybody.
Thank you.
I think when we go through this, I think my favorite improvement strategy here is number three. I think comprehension that you talked about, our students engaging, I would call through college, prior knowledge, I think that's something that the kids are struggling with from elementary all the way until high school. I have a ninth grader that did her algebra and I asked her to see how she did it and she had no idea. So I love that you're, you're starting a hard focus on that at a elementary level. I think that that is really going to serve our kids throughout the years if they learn that at a young age. I remember hating that so much in school, but it's hard. It's a hard thing to focus on, but I think it's extremely important and I'm really happy to see that in there. So that's all I have. I didn't have any questions, so.
Aiden, Annabelle, Liam, do you guys have any questions? Tucker?
Just like a terminology clarification thing. What is like, you guys mentioned a lot of like grouping and like all of that with teachers. What does that look like kind of school to school, like with staffers? Yeah, teaming. What does that look like kind of school to school, like with staffers? Yeah, teaming.
So teaming is a way for us to look at our standards. So we pick a standard that we're focusing on, and then how do we create a task for that standard? So we can see we teach that we're actually teaching that standard. And we really look at, is this standard the actual, if it's fourth grade, for example, is this, are we teaching the fourth grade standard, or are we teaching only a first grade standard? Are we teaching up to a fifth grade standard? And really focusing on what they need to go on that grade level. And then assessing that and seeing, we give them a creative post to see if what we're actually is what the standard is asking for. And really getting to that standard because sometimes the words in the standard are on purpose, they're vague. So then we can also look at, we look at the fifth grade standard, we look at the third grade standard, but like, this is where we need to incorporate. So let's make sure that you know that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was wondering about on strategy number four, that bullet point about kids involved in community. If you could just expand your ideas on how, what communities kids have the opportunity to be involved in.
We have a couple right now. We have our, we have a lean green team, it's like the health and wellness team. And then we also have our council, but so those are two. I've been trying to pull some of our kids that are there for the YMCA. They actually give me really good ideas because they're there a lot longer. They're like, you know, in the morning, if you do this, it would be a lot better for them. I'm like, I could do that. So I have one girl right now who's, tonight is supposed to be designing, she wants a zip line on her playground. So I was like, all right, that's a big thing. Show me what your plan is for this. What the, so she's like, I'll drop tonight, and I'll show you where you can put it. So I was like, we need the space. It can't be in the middle of the soccer field. She's like, okay. So, but just those ideas are like giving kids voice. And another kid who was telling me how much it would cost, and he's like, I don't know if it's feasible right now with our budget, Mr. White, so. I'm not sure if you know what our budget is, but I'm aware of that.
Yeah, have them give Mr. Everest the numbers.
Future student board member.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Do you participate and watch dog program?
Yes, we watch dog programs. I felt, so everybody else mentioned that, and I'm like, I should put that on ours.
I just, I just wondered.
I personally participate as well.
Thanks. I love it.
Nobody has such a, the end right to like ask the grade, the school levels, like elementary and. Those are general questions, not like specific school questions.
Excuse me. Just two questions. I can't remember. Are you guys doing culture of care?
We're doing culture of care as well. That would be where, but yes, we're doing those where teachers are meeting with the circles.
Okay. And then in strategy number one, you talked about implementing a co-teaching model. Now, you guys kind of ran a pilot essentially, right? I mean, for liar?
Yeah.
Okay.
The last couple of years.
I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say two, but.
But then it's, it's one of those things you kind of keep kind of addressing because you get new staff members. Then you get, you hear about what they're doing at other schools, and you're like, oh, that's a great idea. Maybe I need to try that. When I hear Aspen, what they co-teach with like specialized teachers and stuff as well, I'm like, that's something I want to see more of, so.
Okay. So you're just, you're now, you're just turning it.
Probably the wrong word on there. It's trying to continue.
Expanding it probably too.
How we can do more of these things along with bullet points.
Okay. Okay. Are we done with Tucker?
No.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. One other thing you said, this is a big thing. On your very last item, your very last bullet point on strategy for students build on, fully question each other's responses. This is like kismet because our speaker at the symposium yesterday, our keynote was, and she's a local, she's a local lady, people know her, Chalice Springfield. But she's, she has a company, she does coaching, but it's called Unstoppable Curiosity. And the other thing she talked about, I thought was really interesting, is how there's basically two conversations in the world. One is a conversation of advocacy, and one is a conversation of inquiry. So when you're talking to somebody, you're either trying to make them understand your point of view, or you're asking about their point of view, regardless of what the subject matters. And she said, I wish they would teach this in schools. And I thought, I think it'd get you in front of schools and get you that opportunity. So I throw that out there to the district because she does, I mean, this is what she's doing. She's doing speaking engagements like that, and that, I think it would be a really cool program for, at the elementary level, because she's kind of a fun whimsy lady anyway. But yeah, she talks about, you know, how do you ask the right questions? How do you talk to each other so that you're not bringing somebody down or creating strife, but actually coming from a position of genuine curiosity? So yeah, I would just throw that out there. This was great.
You talked a little bit about nonfiction text and how that was something that we needed to work on. How are you going to integrate? Where are you going to, is it going to be history, like autobiographies? Like, are you just throwing it all in? I think that's a huge. We have a, we have a lack of sharing with our kids our history and our nonfiction texts. They all want to read fiction, right? So how are you going to get that done?
I think that was Mr. Place's thoughts.
Oh, gosh. Oh, I wrote it on that one. My bad.
I'm trying to find different like first texts to get.
Okay, I wrote it on the wrong one, and I was thinking elementary. No, I really don't have any on it.
Okay. Well, let's go to Dr. Krill, I think was next. Anything for M E S?
Yeah, I can start. All right. So I have a question for you regarding on the prior year, you had crossed out development, school-wide scope and sequence for science and social studies, which is great understanding to put up that on the back burner, but I was surprised to see that you didn't add that to this year. Instead, you changed that to something else in my notes. How did you change that to?
The last bullet on this segment?
Yeah. Yeah. So why did you not knock the science and social studies and change it to focusing on something else for this year?
So it is science and social studies and also specialized areas. So that would mean our art, music, PE, STEM and library as well.
It was like what? Okay. Is that attainable to achieve that alignment across like that things? I mean, it's hard to cultivate change in one thing, let alone four things.
So our specialized areas teachers, they're a team of one. And for them, it's really just mapping out what is the plan for the year. And then they can use the sequence provided from the classroom teachers and what's happening in each of the grade levels to be able meaningfully integrate when their students have that easy cross-curricular connections.
Okay. So because there's only one teacher, it's much easier to vertically align like the specials type items. Okay.
And it's three grades.
Hi, Jen. You had talked about restrictive on bullet point number four on strategy number three, to begin implementation of restorative conversations in classrooms. If you could just speak to me on that and what that means.
So last year, we had a team of teachers who went to the initial training with cultures of care, and they became implementation team. So they really became models of how to have those conversations. They led the professional learning on the community circles. They also led the training around restorative conversations. The implementation of that was primarily lived with office staff and those teachers. So this year, we're being intentional around transitioning to all teachers and all classes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You talked about the four cycles of teaming and aligning others and review. I think the first time, we're gonna leave it if you last, was that a year ago? In nursing, we do assessment, diagnosis, planning, implementation, evaluation. And that really appeals to me, how you're addressing it. I feel like it's a similar process, and it feels very logical. And I feel like you're having a lot of success with it, and we really want to recognize that. I like it.
To do the work of our teachers. They are amazing. What you're doing, so. Thank you for your leadership.
Liam, Annabelle, Aiden, do you have any questions for M E S?
I do. Can you explain cultures of care? Just talk about that. It's just a little more.
So the culture of care is really around developing the lining in classrooms. And the training is around restorative practices. And so making sure that kids feel like they are part of the community in their classroom, and that's accomplished through those connections, our community circle. And they do complete those regularly. I do, regularly, every day in most classrooms. Our specialized, our special areas teachers see kids once every five days, so they rotate through, and so they don't complete as many of those connection circles. But then it also stems out from that and those solid relationships that are within those community circles to then when there is a break in a relationship or there is damage in harm in a relationship, to being able to repair that at the individual level, but then also at the classroom level as well.
Jen, I don't have any questions for, you did, you did a really good job. You're, I was crossing off a lot of the stuff. I had questions for you, and I know we're coming, we'll be visiting your school here soon. And so the stuff that I have inklings about, I'm sure based on what we saw at Elwell and what we saw at Pioneer Ridge, well, I'll get my answers. So thank you. Go to Jess. Well, I was gonna put him, he's like, it's kind of that, he's an intermediate school, so he's, he's in.
Is that why you're in your own row?
Yeah. Well, if you want, if you guys want to stay, we can do Alan really quick. Only, and I don't, I don't have any questions for Pioneer Ridge just because we just got there and most of, and you did a great job up here, so.
I do have a question for Alan.
Oh. But without for Jess.
Oh, I thought we were just kidding.
No. I'm joking.
He never jokes.
Serious.
So serious.
Serious character.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I feel we had our work session at Pioneer Ridge recently, and we asked so many questions there, so. I didn't have any questions.
Okay. Let's see who's next. Oh, Alan.
My question was with, you had mentioned co-teaching, that you're going to implement co-teaching. And I'm just curious on a logistical level, how does that work with teachers? How does that work in general?
So when we decided to do this, we made our master schedule. Now, I used to work that, we've had some adjustments we've had to make, as well as how we recruit our class list. So essentially, we have four classroom teachers per grade. So in those four rooms, we have one that would have a few more kids on an IEP. Our students that are ML students, students that are multi-negual in a different room. And then two that are kind of cusp kids that are replanned, are in the MTSS process that you heard about tonight. And we push in the certified teachers, our intervenants are in the MTSS rooms. Our specialized teachers pushing into the room that has the IEPs. And then our ML teachers who live in ML. And we're focusing this year specifically on literacy, although we do have some components in our math when it fits. When they go in, they know those key little plans that they're on, and they're able to strategically work with them. One thing that I did said, our teachers was kind of resistant against it, and so I said, no, we're all doing it. We're all going to try it. We'll see after the end of the year. Maybe we'll make some improvements. And one of our teachers is like, I did not want to do it. She resisted, and she absolutely loves it. And her students are now finding success more than she says she's ever been, because they're more confident, because she's in there alongside them, and they're together with them, so. So it's been some challenges. There's been some behind it. Tomorrow, Todd's coming, the UNC professor that we're partnering with, and we're doing a feedback cycle. Excited to see the growth that they've already made, because like, there are all these twelve cohorts, or dyads, excuse me. So groupings of co-teachers, they're all the difference. That's okay. We told them, we're just wading in the water. We're learning how to do this. It takes time building chemistry within the teams to completely make it coming. So we're going to work that direction. And so far, I feel like overall, it's going pretty well. Is it tough at times for some of our staff because it's new? Sure. But like we tell kids, we can do hard things.
Yeah. And it's just impressive from a pain point of view to be able to create those schedules. And that in and of itself is so much work and planning just to get to that point, so. Yeah, I think it's, I think a really valuable way to learn, especially for, obviously for students and also for staff to see each other in those positions too. So you.
Well, I'll just add it up briefly. When we talk about collective efficacy and pushing our teachers to grow from each other, and everyone, that was really impactful. When we sat down with Todd, he wondered how both staff members that were part of that dyad, what was their genius? What was their experiences they brought to the table? And I was just observing these meetings, to be honest with you, it was pretty fascinating to see how people that I've known quite a few years in a lot of cases, what they identify as their strengths. So it's growing them. They don't even know at this point, which, I mean, I think they do somewhat, but they don't realize it. And now I think I'm talking in deeper conversations at times. It's like, okay, here we go. You know, it's working.
Thank you so much.
All right, I have one. It's kind of like a broken record, but that middle section strategy two has so many bullet points in it.
Yes.
I know you're a strong leader. You're in a new school. Like I, some of these things are easy ones that you're continuing, that you've already been working on. But some of them, like cultures of care, along with meaningful leadership opportunities. And then the awards and showcases are fantastic, but it's additional nightly activities. I am concerned about the burnout, laugh on new things, and working extra hours to be able to hit these because if they want you to stretch yourself, but I also want to see you succeed.
So as far as the cultures of care, I know it says implementation. Really, probably that's implementation in a new building. We've been doing some of that work already, and a lot of our staff bought into it. As far as the night success lab, that's been going for a while, so we're just naming it. Same thing with the PBIS systems, just making minor tweaks, just as I think Dr. was right. Like we, they're very similar. We have nights of the month. They're being said, they have these things, we're just little tweaks based upon each group. As far as the watchdog program, Mr. Cohoon's, we're crushing that, and so it's work that he's leading. The last two bullet points, we're replacing with other, and I didn't articulate this. So we're not adding to, we're just changing what we're doing at it. So as far as the semester student award nights, instead of doing meetup conferences, we're not doing that at MIS. Instead, we're doing this in replacement up. Those were two nights a year. We're doing these two nights a year. And so it's in replacement. And the same thing with our student showcase, instead of doing a literacy. And the same thing with our student showcase, instead of doing a literacy night, that's gonna work best. So it's not other new commitments, it's just a different way of engaging with our community and showing off the greatness that are in this world. Just gonna be different.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I would just add is, I would love to be able to come to the student showcase and I think many of the board members would agree with that, so.
We'll get you invited.
So, yeah, let, let us know when that is, so we can celebrate that too.
Yeah, our OAT team is actually, we're deciding whether to do it right before CMA, it's like in, right before we start really digging into it, we can more so in the May. We're gonna get a date here soon, in October, May is our meeting, so we'll get that to you as soon as we have it.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say, and, and this is directed to you in particular, as it is every, the whole team here, but the way you said it, talking about kind of wading into the water with the co-teaching, and I, I really appreciate the approach we're taking to these implementation techniques. I think sometimes, even in the, in the recent past, you know, we, we had some very quick, we're gonna do this, this is how it's gonna be, and there's no flexibility with it. And I, I love how, how you, the approach you guys are taking, and you're allowing your teams the opportunity to take ownership and get invested in the processes and making it for themselves, make it work for themselves, that it's probably gonna be a, you know, if you're not hitting these 12, 12 deals here, you're doing it wrong. Because we're not looking at those metrics, we're looking at a different set of metrics. And I think you guys are finding the culture, the unique culture in each of your buildings, the culture, the unique culture in each of your staffs. And so I just really appreciate you guys. And that goes all the way up to the top, understanding, understanding that. And that's, the, the people work better when you allow them the opportunity to get invested and, and build something for them. Alan, the only thing I was gonna really ask you, I had a question about the teaming, but you, you got pretty good, you answered pretty well on the previous question. But, and you'll probably go over this when we come visit your building, but can you talk briefly about some of the leadership opportunities you want to create for students?
Yeah, so in the classroom, most teachers are in student jobs, but those who didn't now have those as implemented into their spaces. What we are doing, the same group of teachers, we actually have put the list pretty far. So examples would be, Aspen knows about this, those halls get nice good scuff marks, right? And so having a beautification team, they could come in, there's kids who really do that, pick up the balls at the end of the day, so they don't lost, and an adult has to do that. Do you like that beautification team?
I used to call them my attention beautifications.
I didn't know. Such as helping support in the office, those tasks that could be, we're not trying to pull them out of instructional time. However, there are students that sometimes complete work and instead of next, give them ownership into the building. We're thinking a, a different approach, it's not finalized, so I know it's being reported right now, but instead of fifth graders this year going through field day, having fifth, our fifth graders run field day. So that would be an example of that. We have not completed that, but that is the work that we are doing behind the scenes. So when we do roll it out, there's a lot of intentionality and we're not just rushing it. We spent the entire month of September, we do live announcements, and the entire month was around the theme of LEAD group. So we're kind of priming the pump to prepare not only our students, but the staff that this is about. So those are some of the examples. By the time you guys get there, we will, we should have it all in place. Really, that probably will be a big highlight of the evening to celebrate.
I guess I have one, one more question. Who are your guests here? I mean, were they gonna offer anything or did they just want to hear?
I just met them.
They're, they're, they have middle school and high school students.
Okay.
They seem real nice.
Okay.
I don't know if it belongs to the Sheena and the menu family.
Okay.
They're library users.
I thought maybe they were, they were gonna like, give some testimonial for somebody and I didn't give them that opportunity to do that, so. Okay, let's move on to Aspen.
All right, I'll start. I think it's the way it's worded, but it's confusing me because it words weird in my brain. The very last bullet point of strategy two, I've been sitting saying it like 20 times and it just doesn't make sense to me. Can you please clarify that?
So we've done literacy focus for years, like, we've seen that, we've seen, we can see that as evidence in our data. This year, kids will be writing, but we're gonna focus on the feedback to kids to improve their practice. The flip side of that is that haven't done math integration across the board, across content, that's, so there's two, two pieces to it. It probably should have been two bullets to cover that.
Can you expand on the math integration a little bit? Because I'm thinking like, like, putting, putting English and math is easy, because you're like, just right out of the store, buying five apples, right? But putting math in English, I feel is, maybe it's the same, not what I'm saying, but it feels awkward to me, I guess, going, putting math into some of these other things.
Yes and no. So we, we've asked for multiple layers of it. So math is a lot of critical thinking, right? Middle schoolers like to have the answer, give me the answer, tell me what to do, critical thinking is something we're working on with them. So the teachers have been tasked with integrate math in an authentic way. If you're a social studies teacher, I don't want you to just put like five plus five up there and, and say, okay, this is your math integration for the week. What does it look like? So in one of the social studies classes, the teacher did their flying to places to visit. So on their flight, they had to use scale to figure out how far they were actually flying and what is, what is the conversion for that? So just authentic ways to integrate math. And obviously, some classes are way easier than others to do that, but just those opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
I was wondering if you could expand on the work-based learning opportunities that are provided at the middle school level?
So we don't call them work-based learning opportunities. We have this, so we have the CTE pathways, so we have ag, business, BACS, health science, health science-ish, because I wouldn't say it's a total pathway, we do a lot of exploration. Yeah, I was getting there. I lost my track there. No, we have robotics, computer science, I was going around the building, can't remember, construction. So we have pathways, I wouldn't say we necessarily have work-based learning opportunities for kids, but they have the opportunity, like the eighth grade classes are year-long classes that actually are the entry points for the high school classes. So there's that direct alignment there.
So they get the tier one.
They get the tier one, yeah. So our kids can take the eighth grade year-long construction class and skip to the next level with Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
My question was the MTSS, the multi-tier system of support. If you could explain what that is and then how you implement that.
Yep. So we're actually, we have been implementing it, this is the first year I'm actually directly overseeing it. So what, in the past, historically, teachers met once a week and talked about students, it was recorded on a spreadsheet. One, some of the feedback, and we can see that in our data, I can see that from teacher feedback and the one-on-one meetings they're having, is that teachers were like, we simply talk about kids, but like, we get no traction, we don't feel like we're helping. So this year, I'm meeting with them the first week of the month, we have two meetings, so we talk about kids for 86 minutes. We do not leave the room until we have a strategic plan for a kiddo. So we meet next week, I'll meet with them. Each team prioritize their kids, on there it says what everybody's doing, here's the movement that we're making with kids when we meet next week. They will have recorded the next group of kids we want to talk about, but we'll talk about the first group. The hope is, is that when we're talking about each kid individually and really honing in on what they need, is it a specific reading skill, is it a specific math skill, is there a behavior that's needing some type of need? And then we're creating that tier two strategy that specifically hones in on that kid, what we know about them, will actually meet their need to get the traction to move forward to support them. And so we, we've done a system in the past that didn't necessarily drill down. And this year, I'm really, really working with teachers and they're phenomenal with it. We're actually using AI. Our, our tools kits, I've told them our only is to use what we know and we don't know everything. Use AI to talk about, like, I have a kid who's struggling in class, he struggles to read long sentences or type it into AI, see what strategies pop up. And the teachers were like, this is really cool, because I don't have to know everything, the world's at my fingertips. But we, we do a team approach to it to really, it's, it's really exciting, honestly. Some of the teachers said it feels like, the week after, we had teachers saying, wow, we tried what we talked about and like, they're doing it.
It works.
Which is cool, because kids, kids will do what we ask them to do, we just need to give them the tools to do it.
Thank you. I, I love that, how personal it is. I think it's so important for students to realize how invested this, I, it's, it's your careers. I know that there are people that go into it, but they go into it for this reason, is they truly, truly want to help students succeed. And I think just what you spoke on just emphasizes that exact point, is this is how we help students succeed, literally on a one-to-one basis. So thank you, I, that just gave me tingles to, you did explain how that works. Happy tingles.
Honestly, it's incredibly low, because I get the wins from teachers and I get to see kids benefit from it.
Any other questions for Aspen? Mine, so I'm, I have this on, and I actually have this on everybody, so I'm just gonna ask. The co-teaching, co-teaching teaming, that's pretty much the same thing in each building, it's just being implemented in different ways? Okay.
Yep. Our is forced, so we have four teachers that are co-teaching. They coach in four classes each grade level, so we have 16 teams.
Okay. You talked a lot of this process of visioning and pulling in the profiles of a graduate. What, what are you guys doing? I mean, you, you spoke about that, we're in a new building, we, I mean, it's a blank canvas. What, what are some of the things you're, you're gonna do with that?
Yeah, and I'll share more about this when we meet in two weeks.
Please don't go.
I'll have a more recent update, because we're doing some work on the 10th with it. But we started, we are consulting with John Cooney around some of this work. And so we talked about the profile of graduate this summer. My, my conundrum was how I want us to work with what we have to fit, because I didn't like the idea of the profile graduate done to us, it's us working in tandem with it. And so when I met with the consultant and I said, you know, how do I make this really work? And we talked, and he was like, how do you take what you're doing and like, take it to the next level, take it to an 11? And so we talked about it and we, I said, you know, this is a opportunity for us to, to figure out who we are in a new building, because I took over the building right after COVID. We didn't have all the CTE pathways that we have now and our, doesn't capture any, doesn't capture any of that. So we, in September, met with staff and said, what do we do really well? Like, tell us what we do that you just feel is phenomenal. So they created their brainstorms, really the big theme that came out of it is we do a sense of belonging really well. So when we meet with them on the, they're really gonna hone in on like, what part of belonging do we do really well? And then what do we want to take to the next level? And then we'll take that to the profile of the graduate and say, so we do this really well, how is this gonna fit in with the profile of graduate? That will also wrap in to the staff principles that they've already created, so those are defined, we have four staff principles. And then we won't do this in October, we'll do it in November, start talking about, we have our Rock On vibe now, we're gonna rebrand that to the students. So all of those pieces are gonna feed in to that alignment with the profile of a graduate. Don't anticipate, we'll probably be to that point where I'll be able, here's our finished project, cra, till probably February, just because I want to take the time to get staff input and student input and really make it thoughtful with the plan to do a lot of groundwork to roll it out next year.
Cool. Well, that's exciting, I'm excited to hear more about that. Any other questions for Aspen? All right, Dave, he's been just such a good little guy to sit there this way. Any questions for Mr. Benson?
I'm gonna get mine out of here.
It says eight pages are on you.
Yodel, yodel. You can get. I never joke. I never joke.
Don't kid a kid.
Did you have a question for?
No, I just was, I was just gonna clarify Mr. Wales' question about teaming. You know, we're departmental.
Right, yeah.
We saw you politely return.
I retracted it.
No, yeah. And, and I, and I get that. I mean, it's gonna be, really at the elementary, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot more similarity at middle and.
And the co-teaching is generally, you know, that's marriage, right? So we have some solid relationships, you know, professional teacher and a local teacher.
Right.
All right, I'll start. Strategy two, second bullet point. No, first bullet point. My eyes are going cross, it's getting late too. All right, the summative alignment. Since I, my older daughter started our RHS nine years ago, five years ago, really long time ago, six years ago, nine years ago, summative alignment at the high school has been discussed and here we are still discussing it. How are we getting there, Benson? I feel like we've been like, talking about it, summative alignment for so long, it was like, well, this teacher's teaching this book and this teacher's teaching this book, blah, blah, blah. And I feel like for nine years, we've been talking about it and I would one day like to be to the promised land of summative alignment.
So, you know, I think it's, thank you, yeah, I think it's, it's been happening in multiple departments. So the scope and seats in English, math, science, social studies, you can go through those classrooms on a given observation, on a given day, and pop into those classrooms. And they're very, they're very much on the same spot in the lessons, which then leads yourself to a, to a very similar, and they're teaching the same things, right? So if you're coming in here, you're seeing one teacher teach, you know, claims, evidence and reasoning, you're going to next one, they're also teaching claims, evidence and reasoning on the same day. So, so maybe, I don't want to give the false impression that we're just starting it, this has been going on for several years. It's just a matter of tightening it. So, so we are giving students the same experience, standards-based, regardless of who they have. And then the assessment is also that same piece where your final four or five-week unit test is also the same questions. So when you do an analysis, you're, we can draw from a conclusion, which is gonna be super important with math, you know, and seeing some of those holes.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I don't want to give the false impression that we're just giving a shot now. It's been kind of ongoing to have that continuity across. So, you know, we do a decent amount of vertical alignment, but we do a ton of horizontal alignment. So all of our teachers, we don't have the luxury of what's been asked, where it's, you know, four teachers, each other, same planning each day. But I do create a master schedule where if you three teach Algebra I, you will have common plan throughout the week with each other. That make sense?
Then I have one more question. Regarding, I mean, my, it's been a minute since my oldest, the two, my oldest and my youngest have been in high school, so things are changing, they've changed. One thing that was interesting for me as a parent, that's been helpful for my student has been that it's a weird page that has every lesson and some sort of resource attached to that lesson. And this is specifically for geometry right now, because I have a ninth grader, but is that specific resource for every math class at RHS? Where you have like lesson 1.1 and underneath it, there's either like a video or flashcards or something cool set up? Yeah, is that, is that with every math class?
Through math itself?
I don't know, I'd have to look, because it goes to all these different links. And so it's helpful as a parent, but is that through all math classes? Because if I'm looking at that for just geometry and we're looking at our PS, PSAT scores decreasing in math, do we have that same resource for stats and trig? Where every lesson has a corresponding video or flashcards or something to help with that?
For Algebra I, Algebra II and geometry, yes. I will, I will ask about those Singleton classes like control stats.
Yeah, because that goes into your PSAT scores as well as, as you're, as you're growing in your math skills and those SAT scores and stuff. So it's just really, if you're trying to pop that.
I can answer that one for pre-cal. Pre-cal, well, calc they would, because it's a UNC class, so it's different. Things they're doing, same with UNC statistics, but for pre-cal, um, we don't, we have a different textbook than Algebra Two. Geometry and Algebra One source is different as well. Um, but for those classes which are all required, they all, they all should be the same.
And then, yeah, kind of bouncing off of that too. Um, I know that last year I took pre-cal obviously. And around the SAT time too, if there was something we didn't touch on that we knew would probably open the SAT, we'd take a little bit of time. Take a step back, learn that, or relearn like the simple things you kind of forget from Algebra One. So a lot of staff members I know started to do that. So that was a really positive change. It's just a matter of kind of that trickling down to our PSAT scores as well.
And that kind of references the anger assessment. So giving the students more opportunities. That happens in English, like writing, you know, it's just mirroring the samples of what you're gonna see on the test during, during instruction. Now, obviously it's the balance. The more times you're working on the assessment prep, you're taking away from instructs. As getting through certain units and different standards. That was always the push and pull with teachers to say. You know, what is our measurement of success? Right? Is it, is it really covering these higher order thinking skills that are available in novel studies? Or is it taking three days to prep for a PSAT?
On that note, I, I did, um, I like what you said about the full practice test and I, I know you have to have the balance. And I have.
I'm not thrilled with it. So I mean, yeah, so I think we're gonna do it.
Okay.
Because it's just, you have to kind of leverage your time. And, you know, I'm thrilled by spike up and then spike down.
Right. I did, I've been talking to some kids and I, I did have a conversation with one student who, again, in another school and they did. Do those kind of pre-tests and they, their response was, I mean, it's child, but said it was very helpful. I say a lot about how I'm concerned about the math and, and. English scores and I, I know I say that a lot and I, I want to emphasize. You know, my kids have fabulous teachers, Wachowski, Craig, um, Den Harris, um, Johnson, Wells, like, love them. Great, amazing teachers. Um, but we're missing something and I. I want us to really focus on, on what we're missing. I'm a great principal, we have a great leader, we have great teachers. But we're, we're not doing something right. Maybe it's us. Um, I feel like we need to get, I don't know if it's input from the kids. I, I talked about going to, you know, maybe Liberty or Yavlin or, or some of the schools that are, have these hyperforming. Don't kill me for saying that. Just, just seeing what other people, like, just, let's, I know that's not a popular opinion and, and, and I was. I was told, you know, Liberty, that's the cream of the crop. I think our kids are the cream of the crop. So.
I'd have a long conversation about what.
I, I, I know, I know. It's very complex. I know, I know Bob and I, I know they do things differently. Um, but I mean, there's Vanguard. We could just see like, because we have the tools, but, um. And I'm, I'm very much a proponent of, of higher education. Um, I love RCT stuff. I love. Our focus on AP and the UNC classes we're doing in the metro, all of it, but I, I feel like we're, we're missing something and I. I think the students could actually give us some really good feedback on maybe what they need. We have, we have the tool there. I, I just, I'm disappointed in, in our scores. I don't think the fall eyes in your teachers. I think. I think that we're just missing something in the, in our kids. And I love how Annabelle said I was in pre-cal, of course. Of course, I did, I never, I am not, uh, math is not my strength. So I never took pre-cal. The classes my kids take, I have to have my dad help them with it, um, if it's math related because it's, it's just not my jam. But, um. I, I would like to see us look at that and, and I'd like you to give us some feedback on how we can help, help you. I know not every kid's gonna, gonna score well on those tests, but I'd like to see us be higher than we are.
That's what I, and it's one thing.
Of course.
You know, right? It's, it's.
Very complex.
It's the, even the approach from the students on, on the test itself.
Oh, yes, definitely. Definitely some of them.
How much they care.
Right.
That.
Yes.
Are they going to college? Are they not? You know, 70% of our students. Actually, probably 75% of our kids are not going to a four-year college, right? Not at all for that. They're going to A's, do the big awesome, they're going to work.
Right.
So just making, incentivizing their interest in showing us what they know.
Yes.
And that is one of many measurements, but certainly. And then of course, you know, look at achievement versus growth. What they're coming in, track those kids all the way down to third grade, tenth grade and. Kind of see where they're at and then achievement over growth. That's especially if you're starting.
We'll just point out, um, when you said, is a lot of high schoolers struggle to see the runs and really trying or even studying for a test like the PSAT. The PSAT has, is this little. Relevance other than. In the SAT and there is the PSAT NMQST, which is to qualifier for the National Merit Scholars, which is a, then, um. You get really high score National Merit Scholars, finalists, finalists, where you get really big merit aid for college. There's many of them even nationwide. Um, and it is very hard for kids to even know that that exists. Or try to study for that. It's completely self-study if you want to do that. And then also SAT and the PSAT are built really weirdly and very unique to other tests. We are, we grow up through this district thinking MVA and CMAS. They are nothing like what College Board produces. Unless you take an AP before taking the SAT, you will not have really any experience with it. The test, I mean, I would, I encourage you all to even come there and look at what those practice tests look like because they are very weird. And.
I mean, I think most of us have done that.
I've taken it so bad.
No, it, and it's, and it's a weird structure.
Yeah.
And it's, it's hard to really see the connection between what we're learning and what the test is. And it is hard to correlate those.
Yep. Um, Benson, can people opt for PSA and SAT? Like, you know. Why do we not have more kids? I feel like every kid like opts out of like state testing, but I feel like no one opts out of like SAT. And like, I don't know. If they like, don't need to take it and it doesn't retain them, then like, do they know that they don't have to take that?
I think part of it is can't prove like a lot of, most of the kids are taking it anyways.
I just was curious. I've never heard of anyone opting out of an SAT.
Yeah, we had 260 kids take SAT, so that didn't match the number of kids.
Okay.
So from a leadership lens, it's not something we encourage because it impacts participation on our school performance. So it doesn't, it, it doesn't, it doesn't impact like the total number, but there's, there, there's a section for participation and your goal is to be a bow.
Yeah, I just was curious about something like.
Yeah, and then opting out is becoming.
What the heck is that? Am I having a stroke or guys all hear that too?
It's the sound of the heartbeat of the school district.
Somebody's heart is beating too fast. Somebody's just. It's not mine.
Well, weirdly enough, that's how my heart generally beats. So I was like, am I, is that, somebody go get that box off the wall?
Well done, Kate. Good job.
Thank you, guys.
That's just, thanks for putting up with that SAT. That's like the most miserable gesture.
Love it.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay. I know.
Yeah. That's true.
And I just want to say, um, from my perspective, maybe Amanda's perspective too, we appreciate the push. For ninth grade students getting counselors in at the ninth grade level. It'll be really interesting to track, to see if implementing that, I think it will have great dividends payoff. So I'm really excited to see that.
Thank you for the support, honestly. And the grant and hiring and obviously, you know, everyone's always asking for MT, but.
I love how you change it. I know you took student input on that, how the counselors are meeting with them. I mean, that's maybe an impact on a lot of kids. That have to, that have maybe only seen their counselor once or maybe none at all. And it's just, I mean, it, it keeps it organized and lets them know, you know? Because a kid, a kid's not reach out a lot of the time and say, hey, I need to meet with you. Just, just setting that standard. And the ninth grade counter's awesome. I think that also helps. You and the teachers, you know, you all are basically social workers as well. And I hope that you, you give us the feedback on, on those kind of resources, you know, with work range and, and adding counselors and things like that. Those are resources that, that we want. I, I can't speak for the board, but I want you to get this feedback on because your jobs. You know, you have to figure out this test and how you're gonna get all these kids to do well on all these different standards. And then you're also the main social worker in the building. And I know you have the training for it and, and all the wonderful things, but it's a lot. And, and then a lot of kids and a lot of problems, a lot of home dynamics or whatever those things may be. I love that, that we're doing a few things like, I have counselors and work ranging and do more. I definitely want to care about it. It lets you focus on other things more and read on other resources. Do love the counselor situation in our school. Big fan.
I'm so sorry. I, uh, we kind of transitioned really fast from the elementary school principals, but I wanted to not be a chance to ask.
Yeah, I, I think we're kind of at that spot where we transition to, but school levels.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, you're perfect. So, yeah.
So I know, as you play songs, talked about this a little bit, but, um. How have these improvement strategies been implemented in the special needs classrooms? And actually, all of them are fully integrated. I'm just curious to see like if, or if there's a. If it's a clear path across all the education camps.
Well, I'll start with two of them. When we talk co-teaching, we talk about model of instead of pulling them out and doing pull-out supports. Then you're staying in the class. We're bringing the special ed teacher into the class and supporting in the class. So inclusive model. Having peers modeling also and, uh. It's a comfortable spot, right, to be in your class versus in a small group outside the class. So really catering to, it's hard, right? If you try to do that, we're just a whole, just having two certified adults in there that know what they're, what they need and provide that instruction. So that's fun. The other one, when we talk about TV, um, I know Tucker explained it from the back end. That's where you're looking. How students, and then we talk about a common assessment. That's, they, they build assessment and now they're looking at it saying. Okay, here are our ones, here are our twos, our threes, here are fours. What are we noticing in their work? What moves are we gonna make as teachers? And so having two teachers that are co-teaching together, it's not just one teacher making moves, it's two. So they're working in unison. Really, it's another, how they can support students that are on a special ed.
I want to say that I love that. Like, obviously, most, you know, like my best special needs helper, they replace my heart. On specific plans such as his. And I think that does wonders for, also bridging social gap. Kids, because. I'm really honest, since I was brought into high school, all the friends he made in middle school who's been casted from. And I would love to see him more integrated into this his general, uh, social circle that like he was in middle school and then elementary school. So I'm really glad that you guys are continuing to implement that at the elementary level. Um, and then my second question, and I think maybe you guys might have touched on this a little bit, but, um. First of all, at each school, do you all have multilingual home in classrooms or are they integrated in with the? English-speaking only kids?
So I think, I can accurately speak for all of us and say, um, we've done some intentional grouping. So that, that co-teaching support is maximized.
Okay.
But all of our students who are multilingual learners are in general education classrooms with peers who are not multilingual learners. Done some grouping so that, you know, we have a handful of students that really, um, need direct support in the classroom. And so we've structured it so that they're together to get that support instead of pulling from different classrooms to make that function.
Okay. And my main question from that was, um, how do you bridge the language barrier when you're doing these teeny circles with P2? Especially the elementary level, why not speak English? How, how do you make a bridge that gap or the, oh, hasn't arrived yet? How do you plan to?
I, I can too, yeah. Um, we, our teachers are really good at using strategies to meet, um. Meet the needs of their learners. And so sometimes if we have a student who, um. Has no language proficiency yet, um, they will have a peer say to them. Offer, offer the same instructions in Spanish or their native language, um, so that they still have that book. But a lot of times the, it's called Psyop, but a lot of times our Psyop strategies really do support. Students in that language of acquisition to be able to access and participate more.
Thank you. That's great. I was just very curious because I, I hadn't thought about that in the case at all. Because I, when I was in elementary school, I always remember we had the, the party at a class and you get your own time to do things. I didn't know a lot of those kids that got pulled out, like personally, I never got to take those connections. So I'm really glad that you had the question for that. And that's amazing. Um, my last question was, I was just curious when parents or when fathers or father figures, um, volunteer for the Watch Dogs program. How, is there like a screening process? Because you did mention that they do have a lot of interactions with the kids. Or is it just like a sign up? No, I'm just very curious about that.
Well, I saw a backer system on the running and they become regular. Then we can go through more extensive. But, um, I will say part of that training that we do, I, you know, I was saying, yes, I sat with every SAB. There's a forum we go through. And I shared, these are the expectations. And one of them is like, get involved. Like, you're sitting in the back room, you're gonna miss the boat. And I also, we've also said to our teachers, get them involved, right? And, uh, but one of the big things is you're never, there's certain. News and don'ts, but they're not including like, not in bathroom, kid. Like, you're always here, you're always there. So we're very clear. Be honest with you, they are usually with the adults too. Like, we're, we're strategic, meeting the other adults. And like, we're not just sending them off by themselves with others. So they're with the classroom teacher or they're with the one true, they're out in the playground playing with kids. They're running a sidewalk or crossing, crossing our, you know. So, um, we're very strategic on how we build out their schedule.
Okay.
But also having intentional conversations. They've gone through the system, but we still are, our student safety is number one.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious about that. Thank you all for your, for being here and I'm sorry I saw you. But, um, you all did a hard work.
The one question I have, and again, I, we could just do this for everybody. We talked a little bit about race responses and, and Liam's, oh my god. And I can't remember who said it. It may have been Tucker. But said that at, at one point, a race response becomes kind of overkill for what, what is actually needed. Is there like a step down or, uh? That you guys are, are using?
So like for, in, in our school, they start off the year with like, hey, here's your reminder, you're gonna answer questions. Do you follow the race format? Though we've actually asked them to like step away from using the term race because you say race and you get the interaction. So we say, answer the question. Like, you need to answer the question the way we expect you to answer. So for us, that's kind of the step down. And that's just the standard in our school. That's answer questions. how you answer questions.
And the only other question I have is for the admin team. And Amanda kind of asked this question along the way tonight, but, you know, what are we doing from an admin perspective to ensure that our staff isn't getting too, stretched too thin with these strategies and that they're actually going deep with the strategies and it's not just surface level?
What I would say is, I think we talked about two weeks ago, right? The meat of the work that our building level leaders are doing is a focus on grade level instruction. They talked about each of them tonight, how they're doing it at the middle school level. There's a lot of teaming going on, which I would just reiterate, the teaming process is all planning and evaluation. I mean, I thought Amy's comparison to what they do in the nursing is beautiful. It's all about adult practice and that's what, that is the big strategy we have going on at elementary. That's not changing. That's just, we're just another year into it at two schools and a third year with Millicay. Aspen has been on, I would say, professional learning community, you talk about it lots of different ways, but they've been working on, how do we leverage each other's expertise? And how do we evaluate how we're doing? And that continues to be the strategy. And that's something Davis can work on with the Common Planning Team. So, a focus on grade level instruction, focus on instruction is the meat and potatoes of what we're doing. And then you also saw strategies around the long, and each one's a little different. They summed it up well in saying, most of those are continuation. There's not a lot that you saw on anyone's plans that is brand new this year. And that's what, when we talk about kind of staying the course, that's what you want to do. And we're doing that. I feel super comfortable with what our principals have laid out in terms of what they're attempting to do strategically in the, I don't know, ten, you want to add?
Just one, one quick thing. It really gives a focus to the planning time. Sometimes, you know, planning time can not be as easy as it actually should be. And this gives a good package to how that process goes. And our teachers have really seen the value of using that planning time to do this process.
Do you all feel like you have enough planning time as you're, I know what you're going to say though. I talked to some teachers outside of the district and one thing, like, I think we can look at some areas to regard some more planning time because I know this is a lot of work, it's newer, you're getting everybody on board. There's a school in, I think it was St. Brandon, I took a teacher there, where they had a day, I think it was maybe once a quarter, where the district got themselves and they had a full day to meet and collaborate. Just things like that, if there are things we can do outside the box to help you with, if you're planning, with making sure we actually, this stuff done.
That's something very similar to what we did when we started our implementation at TV. So, to be able to train the teachers and have them go through that process, we provided subs for their rooms so that they could meet together as a team and learn as a team.
Okay.
Love it. Okay. So, I think there's that balance and I think that's probably something else, I think for all of us that we struggle with is when we put subs in the classroom, we're pulling the student's greatest resource from them. So, it's that like give and take and nothing about that feels good for the classroom teacher or us. And I think every year at the calendar committee, this comes up on, how do we get teachers more time? But I know, I in the admin team feel passionately that we can't give teachers more time at the expense of our students. And so, what does that look like? Is it a longer student contact? What does that look like? That comes up every year at calendar.
Yeah. That's another one of those very complex issues that you all have to try to iron.
All right. Guys, thank you so much for being here. This is good. I mean, it's good for us to walk through this and that we have a good understanding and we get questions asked in the community or we hear misinformation in the community. It's good for us to be able to say, no, we, this is, this is what's really happened. I really appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity to come into the schools this year and have you guys take us on deeper dives on all of these things. So, thank you.
Did you hear your question two weeks?
Yep.
Thank you all.
All right. Anything else from the report from the superintendent's office?
It's not very far down our agenda.
That's all I got tonight.
Okay. You had a question?
No.
Report from the CFO's office. Do we have money?
We have money.
Are we paying our bills?
Bill, bar, me and case.
Do we have kids?
Do we have kids?
Can we move on? Let's go to.
I have one thing, I have pretty much more. I have one thing I would like to add on the student count. I would really like to see building capacity added to those. Because I, when I look at the student counts, I'm like, cool, does that mean we're at 60% building capacity or are we at 120% building capacity? I think that would be really helpful.
It would be helpful.
All right, well, let's.
All right, now you can move on. Now you can move on.
Let us do the report. Mr. Everest, please.
Thank you, President Wales, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Nielsen. Tonight, you know, we're doing our first financial statement review for 2526 year. This first one is always very atypical just because of the spending patterns that the district typically has. July, there's not many people here, but we have a lot of annual expenses that get paid in July. You know, in August, you know, we have, you know, students for about, you know, a month. It's just July and August are just very atypical months for our spending patterns through the year. So, just kind of take that as a grain of salt, you know, as you, you know, look through the statements. They're going to be distorted, you know, because of that and then also because we're doing two months instead of one for this report. So, like the budget percentages, I mean, all that's going to be small. So, I would focus just kind of on that middle column, you know, the year-to-date column on the financial reports. Let's see. Yeah. So, you know, and again, you know, with district departments, you know, again, unusual spending patterns, you know, some departments, there's not many people here, other departments, there's a lot of beginning of the year spending that kind of skews our expenditures. So, yeah. And, you know, and again, you know, the schools are, you know, where I would expect them to be at this time of the year. Our departments are where I would expect them to be this time of year. And then kind of the other district funds, all of those are where I would expect them to be. You know, some of them are very light, some of them are very heavy, you know, for startup. That's just kind of the nature of the beast as we, you know, start with the school year. Moving on to the preliminary student count. So, this is going to be in a format similar to how we've looked at it before. You know, kind of the first column is our October 2024 count. And then the enrollment as of, I'm sorry, as of May 20th, which is kind of the, when we were in negotiations, that was kind of what we were looking at for negotiations at that time. And then the third column is enrollment as of September 25th. And so, then, you know, I just have each school broken out separately. I don't know if anyone has any questions about a particular school. I would just kind of like to add that this year, we seem to have been much more stable in our count. I was looking this afternoon and kind of the highest student count we had, well, I'm sorry, the highest count we had in our infinite campus system was, I believe it was, it was on August 6th. So, from August 6th to actually where we went, the poll I took today, we only went down 65 students. So, and you know, and a lot of that, you know, a lot of that decrease is just kind of, you know, students that are no longer here, you know, just kind of getting, you know, exited out of the system. So, it's been a lot more stable this year than it has in years past. I just kind of wanted to throw that out, observation. And if you don't have any, you know, specific questions, this concludes my report.
Is October count your favorite day of the school year?
Actually, like, well, I don't know favorite. So, I really enjoy when our student count is certified. So, that's at the end of November, the beginning of December.
That's true.
Good clarification.
Any questions for Mr. Everest? Any more questions for Mr. Everest? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our consent agenda. Our adopted rules, parliamentary procedure, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive internal review. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Johnson, a second by Director Proctor to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all is in favor. I oppose. It is approved. Do you guys need to, I don't know that we have a whole lot here. Do you guys need a break? I know we've been sitting here for close to two and a half hours, so.
Dang.
All right, well, let's just, let's just keep on rolling through. So, I will go to our old business. We have the final reading of our new policy, EG Service Animals, Superintendent Nielsen.
As board members, we, as you said, we're looking for a final reading tonight to make this policy in place. I think we have had this posted for a month and have had no feedback. But the one piece that we were able to connect with, that I think board members asked us to, to connect with the family that we have, who has a service animal at Roosevelt High School, they were super appreciative, one of the connection with them and they liked the policy. So, that's the only feedback I would give.
Any other questions or addition?
Can I just make a motion?
Sure.
I think we adopt the board policies, EJ, EJ dash R, EJ, EJ dash one and two as presented.
Second.
A motion by Director Musgrave, a second by Director Proctor to adopt the board policies, EJ, EJR, EJ one and EJ two as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Diogna, would you please pull the board?
Monica Johnson?
Yes.
And then Proctor?
Yes.
And Musgrave?
Yes.
Yes. All right, let those little horses run wild.
I hope you stand on horses.
I'm going to see that if it happens.
I have a different idea.
Now you have to do that. Going to hold you too.
All right, well, let's move on to special business. Our first item is the District Accountability Committee charges.
President Wales, board members, we talked about the charges last time we were together and you can see them in front of you. I think we've already had one meeting where we had a chance to sort of repeat what we saw with principals tonight. We will continue to focus on student outcomes, feedback from long-range planning as we walk through that process, work with that group since they were the ones that helped us unpack the portrait of graduate on what the implementation looks like, but also get feedback around communication as we bring on and advocate as more integral part of our system to work with DAC around that, what they're seeing as pros and opportunities. And we talked about those before, so we'd ask that you take, that you approve those charges for the DAC for the year. Assistant Superintendent Kimer is also, but if you have quite a lot of those, but otherwise we'd ask you to approve those charges.
Any questions? I think this is a solid plan for them to, and now who's, is it Monica? Are you going to be the DAC representative?
It's going to be my backup.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And a couple students are joining us too.
You guys are, both are?
Yeah. There's always at least one of us.
Okay. Well, thanks, guys, for doing that. It's a very, it's a very important role. And you learn a lot, too. There's a lot to learn.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion, but if you have one.
Oh, I have, shut me up.
Will we accept the 202526 District Accountability Committee changes? Second, or just, I'm sorry. I'll still second.
A motion by Director Musgrave, a second by Director Johnson to approve the District Accountability Committee charges for the 202526 school year. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Diogna.
Monica Johnson?
Yes.
And then Proctor?
Yes.
And Musgrave?
Yes.
Our next item is the 2526 School United Improvement Plans Approval.
As President Wales and board members, as we've talked about for a good chunk of tonight's meeting, we would ask that the board approve the plans our schools have for their upcoming year. Obviously, there.
I'll make a motion to approve the Unified Improvement Goals for the schools and district as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Johnson, a second by Director Proctor to approve the Unified Improvement Goals for the schools and district as presented. Any discussion on the motion? I just want to say again, thank you for allowing us to have that. I know it, I know it makes for a really long night, but it's super productive and super helpful to hear it, hear everybody talk through what they're, what they're working on, so.
Yeah, that was helpful. I agree. It was a good read.
Yep. Ms. Diogna.
Monica Johnson?
Yes.
And then Proctor?
Yes.
And Musgrave?
Yes.
Yes. All right. We have some new business. We have some recommended policy amendment CASB. They have been super crazy busy. Those, that poor policy. Every time we go to a CASB thing, they're like, their hair is just getting like crazier and crazier, like, oh, we can't.
So, President Wales, board members, tonight we have a set of policies we're asking for our first reading on. We actually have a large number that we will bring to our October meeting. We separated the policies. President Wales, you're right, that CASB sent us out a large number. What we've taken tonight are that these policies we have had in place as a board before, the discrimination, Title IX. Ms. Diogna has done a fantastic job, I think, of creating like a cheat document for us so we can see the changes to each one and what they all, all of the policies we brought to us tonight are all rollbacks to policies that were put in place as of 2020. They were modified in 2024 where now the recommendation is to go back to the policies of 2020 to align. So, you can see there are minor technical changes to confirm with the Title IX regulations of 2020. So, that's, we felt like this was a clean slate to bring back to the board to look at because we've already had these policies in place. The other ones that CASB recommends required a little bit more dialogue about the changes of new policies and what, so that group we'll bring to the October, spend some time having conversation with each of the board members. And then we would ask, these are in front of you for a second reading, if you would decide to approve first reading tonight. And then the October ones, we would bring back to the board for first reading in November to have those put in place somewhere. So, that's our plan. That's how we kind of broke out. So, we didn't have 40 in front of us tonight, but we had this slate that we felt like, given the changes that are in place, we could bring them to the board tonight, but we'd love feedback. Would love feedback.
Um, I have some, I, some of these are are fine. I have some concerns, starting with the A C, the non-discrimination. Um, R one, I'm on the right one. I, it reads to me like we're expanding um House Bill ten thirty-nine um regarding harassment by adults. It looks, it's, we're expanding that to students in this is um. So the intentional use of a name other than the student's preferred name. This extends that to students.
I think we can go back to what was in place in twenty twenty that was there already, but certainly a piece we can not, we can take a look at.
I I don't care for that. I have a few reasons. I think um in our district, I think we have done an X lab on how we treat transgender students. Um, I think our our leadership, our principals, I think, um, I think Tammy started dealing with it in elementary school, if I remember correctly. Um, I think we've done a great job. And I think expanding this state law, um, which is great and applicable to adults, to students uh is dangerous, I mean, First Amendment wise, but you also have, when I worked in in mental health, you you have students that I I had kids that literally changed the preferred name. Um, and I think when you, maybe you have a student that isn't really familiar with that, the other student, and does not intentionally use the non-preferred name. I I think we're getting in in dangerous territory there. Um, I really have hate crime laws already. If it if it really is like a a true harassment situation, the police will get involved and et cetera. But I think as a district, um, when we expand that law, which is not applicable to students, when we expand that to students in our policy, uh, we're getting in an area I'm not comfortable in.
Do you have suggestions that you make for the board to consider?
Um, well, we have. I I honestly, I need to go through it further. I ended up having to do a few things today I I hadn't planned on. But when we're, we're looking at, you know, the 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 definition of bullying and the protected class status um and including students and not just adults in that language, um, for protected classes, et cetera. Um, any of the language that's applicable to that House Bill, what's a House Bill? Ten thirty-nine, I don't want it to be um applicable to students. I, we have the anti-bullying things and like I said, hate crime laws and stuff that are. But I think when we get into that language for House Bill, for that House Bill that, um, I think it goes into effect next year. Um, we're looking at First Amendment implications and and I don't know, a legality risk there. Um, there's a lot in here that I, that would have to be modified and I.
Can you remind me on House Bill ten thirty-nine? Can you remind me, because that's a state state law?
Right.
So it's a mismatch of, is it a mismatch of the federal and state where where the the state is more? I don't know. This this case is not stringent, stringent, that it's more specific than the Title IX rules?
Well, I mean, we had to go back to to the Title IX stuff.
Right, because it's, yeah.
But that's different language when you talk about sexual harassment than when you talk bullying and pull in the language from that House Bill where um adults are held liable for.
House Bill thirty-nine specifically for adults?
Correct. And it's uh for staff and it's not for parents or students. Um, and I don't want to to overreach in that area. I I think, I mean, I know of one instance um of a staff member struggling with using a preferred name and they kind of reached an agreement and um he used, he used the name he was supposed to. Um, but you do have have kids that that maybe don't know. Of course, there are a few students that all all the kids know, you know, but there, a kid could suddenly, you know, change her name, start transitioning, something like that, and holding another student accountable. Maybe they knew them in elementary school and and don't know that they changed their name and it's, it's not an intent. And if if it is an intent, our other bullying policies and our state law can take care of that if there is intent. But I don't want kids pulled into this that aren't intending to do harm. I think, you know, you, the state law also isn't applicable to like a substitute that that's going down the list of names and uses the legal name and and doesn't intentionally offend that child. So it's, the state law is specific on intent, and I think we need to be very specific on that as well. And I think, I mean, I think it's fair, this this the state law is. How about somebody like, you know, we'll we'll do that as adults, but I don't, I don't want kids pulled into something that that as a district we could, we could face consequences for because we we didn't um make our policies specific to our district. I think this is way too broad.
So is he asked for, I'm looking at a group, is he asked for us to take all these back and figure out where we? And that's a question I asked board members.
This is, yeah.
I would, I would say that, yeah, I think you guys should probably get together and discuss that. And and obviously pull, you know, pull legal in on this, too. Um, because he, A C does deal with Title IX and that.
Yeah.
We don't want to get sideways with.
No. I think that that's a lot more clear cut than than when we add in bullying and harassment and make it applicable to students when it comes to gender identity. So I think the Title IX stuff was, I mean, pretty straightforward. But but pulling in that language on harassment and um bullying for kids on on the preferred name is stuff that I'm most concerned about.
It sounds like we're for staff to dig into first, and then Amy, I'd love to connect with you. And I think we see each other a week and a half or so, so see if we can bring something in. What does, what what we'll do, if this works for board members, is we'll just bring this chunk back to the October work session. We'll add to the other ones for us to have a conversation about that and look to.
I don't know if we want to talk to some staff that deal with bullying on a daily basis and get a, get a little of their feedback on this um policy too, but it's it's pretty far reaching.
I have a general comment, and I know I'm gonna put this in empathy, but it's also my job to be a fiduciary for this board. I am, this is the second time that CASB has had a really long, in my opinion, a very long gap between something changing and bringing the change to us. And I think that puts us at legal risk because it's our duty for our policies to match laws. No matter if those laws went into place so many days ago. And I feel like waiting nine or ten months to bring all these changes to us is disappointing because I feel like we've been put at risk for being in non-compliance. And so I'm disappointed, and I understand CASB is, has, may have staffing issues or capacity issues, but it's also my job to be a fiduciary for the district. So I just want to put that comment out there that I'm disappointed that we're hearing about this now and not in May. I mean, I think it's unreasonable for like the next day for these people to crank things out. That's unreasonable, but I also think it's unreasonable to wait nine months.
I don't disagree with you, and I think for Jessica, we got these, I think after our last meeting here, um, we tried to pay attention to when we could get them in front of you, which was the desire to break them into and try to chunk them.
Me, me sitting in a board meeting doesn't actually provide my feedback to CASB. So it would be the appropriate way for me to um provide CASB my feedback as a person to it.
Yeah, I think we've got a couple angles. I think Michael's pretty connected to CASB.
Yeah, with with the legislative piece, yeah, for sure. Um, and I, and I I fully understand what you're saying.
And it's hard, like, I'm empathetic, but at the same point, like, this is our baby.
It it is hard, and I I I would tell you, I'm being close to this process with CASB that it, they are, they are really stressed about it. And I mean, we're in such a unique, it's such a unique situation right now where we have a state government who sits on one side of the aisle and has
They're very comfortable.
totally rewritten everything on the state side, and we have a federal government who's on the other side of the aisle, who is rolling back everything that, and so they are just, I mean, they are super scrambling trying to like just make sure that, I mean, I mean, that is their, that is their job, is to make sure that we're in compliance. And like I said, every time, every time I see them, I mean, they just look more ragged and ragged and harried. Um, and then the, and then they call special sessions and um, it's still like free, so.
I mean, how how out of the box is it to, for us not to rely on CASB? I mean, we we knew when the Title IX stuff hit. Um, I mean, I I.
I would say.
I can legally simplify this policy.
I would say that would be a bad idea.
Yeah. Why is that? Legally?
Legally, yeah.
Legally? I I don't, I don't think that everything CASB does is right for our district. I.
No, and that's fair, and that's why we, that's why we do this process.
Right.
But.
This is, this is a lot of language for a very simple problem.
I can assure you, we don't want to be on the wrong side of.
I I completely agree.
Of title law anyways.
Well, but we we could have changed that ourselves for Title IX, right? Or no, or no?
I wouldn't have felt comfortable doing it without, without either, I mean, that, so we have two options when it, when in these, in these types of situations. One is we can, we can go to our council and have our council work on it.
Uh huh.
Um, which costs us, or we can rely on CASB who has, I mean, we we paid them for this service.
Correct.
In in the form of our dues. Um, and and if you look, if you, if you ever read their briefs, um, they're gonna say, this is, these are generic. And and you need to, you need to make them work for for your district. I mean, some of the stuff, there's not a lot of wiggle room. Um, but when it comes to, especially when it comes to that type of compliance, I I would lean more on the building block that they're giving us as a as a foundation base. And I I think it's fine that if we, if we need to go in and tweak some things to to fit our our community, fit our um district, but.
It it is rough, though, like when Amanda's saying, like, we're behind. And I don't know, it's just trying to um.
I I think there's a.
Have a lot of options, I guess.
Yeah, I think there's a couple options. I think, Michael, you talked about a couple, but I think one that you see bigger districts, they put money toward the in in-house council. And the in-house council can listen to the will of the board and and then craft policy that fits the will of the board that comes at a cost. And so the the challenge for all of us, right, is we talk about how do we get more mental health, which I love the idea, and that takes away from somewhere else. So there's this, there's a dance we do with limited budget to how do we spend the budget? And so the question for the board is, are we interested in, and and you know, this is a, this is some policies, but if we started to think about paying our own legal counsel to update all the policies that we just got from CASB, it would, it would be a pretty penny. It would probably be worth it for us to start thinking about in-house counsel, at least for part of it, sharing with some, something. Um, or we start with CASB and we pass on to CASB. They haven't had forty policies every year forever.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing. This is such an out, hopefully, this is an outlier event where, I mean, in the time I've been on the board, it's, we've seen, you know, maybe four or five policy amendments a year. Um, and it's because, and then they're usually because a new House bill has been, or Senate bill has been signed into law at the state level, and it interfered with something and they just got a strike.
Okay, it's not going to slow down.
Uh, well.
Well, and isn't it true that if we're in non-compliance with Title IX current regulations, we don't receive federal funding? So that a simple way of stating it, that we could get any federal funding pulled?
Yeah.
Or out of compliance, we all?
I I think for that, I would respond. I don't think it's going to be what's on paper. And we talked about, we've had, Tammy's been through training, both, I mean, we had to go through training.
Right.
That walked us through the new changes. And then it was ten minutes later that we were talking about going through different training and backtracking. And so I think that's the, that's the world, that's the world schools are living in right now, right, is trying to think about the practice of it.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, for me, I would love to have policies to you earlier. I would like not to be forty. Um, I probably tend to agree with with you, though, that is probably, we're probably not going to get out of having several for a few years, but I think feedback to CASB around how do they help staff themselves up? And that might be, they charge districts a little more, say a little bit, I mean, I don't know what that answer is.
They might need to bring on some consultants to help them with their work.
Yeah, do something so that they can, we won't be the only ones complaining about a time.
Oh, yeah, and I, and I think they, like you say, I think they even understand, like, it's, it's just been too much.
Well, and isn't it also, as this goes through the appeal, the appeals process, that some of this could be legally recanted? And then they're scrambling again to add or take away right through the appeals process? That's why we're going through it, is it was deemed unconstitutional. So then we're having to revert back to twenty twenty regulations, and so now as it goes through the appellate courts. So I don't know, I just feel like we are almost the byproduct of all these legal battles that are happening.
Yeah.
And like Amanda said, we're just trying to to stay current, I think, as soon as we get current, then.
We won't be.
Then we won't be, then you'll be technically out of compliance again. So, yeah, I don't know what the solution is. It's just really frustrating overall.
I think if somebody did complain that we were in compliance and we can show that we're getting there and this is this is what we're getting and what we're trying to work for. I mean, we're trying, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's what we're here tonight.
Well, let's, let's, let's plan on, we'll bring these back with some suggested modifications to the October meeting and hopefully first reading in November.
Sure.
That fair?
Yes.
Okay, so these are, yeah, these are open for first reading. Um, move on. Do we have any citizen con general topics? None. All right, guys, thank you. Uh, we haven't been, we haven't done a lot of these like this. I appreciate you guys, uh, the extra time, the thoughtful questions and the work that you guys are on, so. At eight fifty, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.